Welcome to this evening's work session. We will start by seeing if any commissioner would like to take any preliminary items for an next board meeting for discussion ahead. All right, here and now we'll go to our first presentation by the Office of Economic Development. Uh, where is Ms. Rocker? All right, Ms. Rocker.
Good evening.
Good evening. Afternoon.
It really is. I'm gonna have to get my own copy out where I can read it.
Okay, good evening Chairman and Vice Chair and Commissioners. Good afternoon.
Commissioner Hamburg is assistant on afternoon.
Good afternoon Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Wonderful to see you all this afternoon. Uh, this is just a quick update. Uh, I was trying to get on this agenda in December, but I'm bumped to January and glad to present to you just some information that I want you to know and stay abreast of in terms of economic health of the county, projects that are notable and projects that are already coming out of the ground that you may be aware of. And one of them is in a video, but I'm not going to show the actual video. Okay, so a little bit about where we are with our numbers right now. As you can see, our population growth since the time of the last census is up to 305,000. We are growing at about, you know, a good rate, just under 10%. And as you see, we're expected to have a .8% in population increase by 2040. Um, our median age, which has been no secret, but just wanted to show you this chart because it's right on par with Georgia and the United States in terms of the largest bulk of our population is between that 35 to 54 age range, and that's 33 years old. And we are still the county in metro Atlanta with the highest female percentage population at 52% and 47% male. Uh, that kiosk you see there, uh, one will be placed in this building. We have one in our offices, but it is a electronic version of everything going on in economic development in terms of numbers, incentives, demographics, partnerships, business resources, all of that. So this is a wonderful tool that we purchased and we had it in the budget to buy one more, so we're gonna put it here in the lobby. Our tax credit status, tier one ranking. Um, as you know, this ranking comes out every year and it's sent to us from the Department of Community Affairs to let us know where we stand. You will be happy to know Clayton has risen in its numbers from the 2022 ranking. Uh, we were at number 17, now we're at number 13 under the 71 tier one counties. Out of the 159 counties, there were 71 tier one counties. And you're either in the bottom 40, which is, you know, high poverty levels, less development is what that means. Uh, when you move up, um, well, your, your definition as a tier one county, um, is the highest level and as you see, it yields the highest number of tax credits per job created. The reason for that is you're seen as an underdeveloped county. And so in terms of projects or investment, and so, uh, the state then has in its, uh, they, if you're ranked tier one, they have to send projects to you first or query your project, your county first for RFI to see if you have the credentials to meet whatever those project parameters are. So as you see from our bordering counties, I thought I would just throw that in there where you see our bordering counties, what they rank. So if they recruited the same project, they would only be able to offer as a tier three county 1250 per job for a job tax credit. And we offer 3,500. So sometimes there is confusion. People think tier one is, is, is a less than status, but it is not. It actually gives us favor with George Power project managers, state project managers, and we are rising. We're now at number 13. So, um, I anticipate by the end of this year, we'll be even further up. So once we get to around number one, we'll bump up to tier two. Uh, yes, Commissioner Hamburg.
Who does this ranking?
Uh, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs does the ranking and they use a variety of information from, uh, underdeveloped census tracts, um, poverty levels, number of children on free or reduced lunch. Uh, it's an algorithm that they choose or that they use and, uh, they send each county their ranking each year.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And you see we're bordered by five counties. Uh, just a note on our labor and workforce so that you will, uh, know this chart I get from the Department of Labor. I request it usually once a year, uh, just to see what our numbers are. So this is as of their latest, uh, calculation. Um, for Clayton County, uh, we have about 143,000 people that work here every day. Uh, you see our unemployment numbers, which are low, and our unemployment rate is 4.4. Uh, Clayton area being 3.8 really means our labor draw area. So, uh, that encompasses where, uh, the Southern Crescent, so it doesn't necessarily mean Clayton County specific, but, uh, the employment rate still remains to be low and, uh, that is a good testament to the companies and the, uh, how our companies have grown in workforce and hiring. Uh, this is our latest list of our top 10. We do have a list of the top 50 employers in the county. I shortened it for the 10 just so you can see the latest ranking. The numbers of the top five companies have not really changed over the last year. Fresh Express is our largest employer. These are employers in the private sector. Uh, from the public side, it would be of course, uh, Clayton County Public Schools and then the county itself is a large employer. Um, but, uh, these are our job generators and Fresh Express is the largest distribution center of all five of theirs in the country. Uh, we have the largest one. So, uh, you see Southern Regional Medical Center has grown in their numbers. Um, Chime Solution has been bought. It's actually under a new name, but as this report is run, uh, it's listed still under Prime, uh, Chime Solutions at 1,200. And then AmeriCole Logistics over at Gillum at 857.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Is there any way from these employers that we can get the average salary?
Yes.
Of those?
Sure.
Very useful.
You want the average salary of our top employers?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, yes, sir. I will get that for you. Uh, just some notable projects. These are the ones that we showed. Uh, we did our Opportunity Clayton Bus Tours, uh, in September, October and November. And as part of the layout of the day, we started at nine in the morning. We, uh, had lunch about 11:30 and during that luncheon, we had our two CEOs greet our visitors and give a short presentation, um, as representatives of large stakeholders. So we had the President of Clayton State. We had the President or the CEO of Southern Regional speak. And during that time, we showed this video of notable projects, projects coming out of the ground. But the video is about just under five minutes and so I won't prolong the time there, maybe if we have time at the end. But as I go through some of these, you've already heard of, you're well aware of the Andrew Young Aquaponics Farm, which has finally finished, uh, their zoning and, uh, getting those logistics down. And we'll be planning a major groundbreaking for them within probably the next two months. Uh, you know about Blue Star Studios and their five sound stages that are open at Gillum, Harvest Village, the other project, the 67 acre development that you heard, um, from the zoning standpoint at a December meeting, but we're very proud of that project that we've been working on for over two years. Um, the Arena Project and then North Clayton High School, which we're so, uh, proud of that design, having the only nine whole executive course in the country. And our small business incubator. One project to note, uh, I'm happy to-
Eric, excuse me. You wanna, uh, tell us a little bit about that, uh, the school system project, the arena? Cause a lot of people don't know about that.
Oh, sure, absolutely. And in the video, we have a great picture of it as well. Um, I don't know if you may just want to play that, but, uh, the school project is the arena project that Clayton County Public Schools is doing in partnership with the county. Um, it is tremendous. It'll be a graduation hub for our 12 high schools and for other counties that want to participate and use it and rent the facility. Um, it's due to deliver in 2025. Um, they purchased the Sears and Robot Building at South Lake Mall, which we plan to submit that for an award for mall adaptive reuse once that gets built because malls all over the country are really being innovative with their big box spaces and I read articles about it all the time and we are certainly worthy of recognition, uh, for how we've, uh, revived, uh, and added energy to the mall because of that arena project. Um, I know the box Sears for about $5.5 million and so inside it will have a rooftop, uh, area where proms and things like that can take place. Uh, this is tremendous investment in Clayton County and on behalf of our schools that was spending money from what I hear at, uh, convention halls and things like that for the students to graduate. So, uh, if the board will oblige me, I'll go ahead and just play the quick video so the citizens can actually see pictures of some of these projects. And we played this for our visitors that were on the tour because they're unfamiliar. And this will really be a tourism-driven project. This is gonna be wonderful to count our tourism visits. This is the site for the arena. What it'll look like when it's built out. Yeah, this is the roof, yeah, you see the rooftop terrace. Kudos to the school system and the architects for such an innovative design. A desirable space that we all can be proud of. And then this is North Clayton High School. This is shaped like an airplane. That's the Nye Hall Executive Golf Course. It's tremendous. Indoor track, I don't know if everybody can see that. And what's great about this project slide, which we load up, it's on YouTube, it's on our website, it's all over the county. These developments are represented. Of course, the small business incubator. Former Social Security Administration. Very excited about what the interior will look like now that we are about to do the evaluations. Okay, that's it for the video. Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Hamburg, for suggesting that. Okay, GSC Steel Stamping, uh, which located here this summer. Uh, they also want to do a grand welcome, uh, to the community ribbon cutting, um, that we will be planning probably in March. Um, no, wait a minute, I was right on this one. Let me talk about Glasses USA first. This is a tremendous win for Clayton County. It started out as project vision. You know, state project managers call us and say, "Do you have XYZ square feet? Uh, it needs to be, you know, near Marta or it needs to have whatever parameters." And we submit sites all the time. And, uh, this one is a project that we did win. Um, they acquired the space, but didn't really, uh, get it ready for business until this past, um, July. And so, meaning they had to invest about $10 million to build a high-tech lab where there are robotics, robots that fulfill these online eyeglass prescriptions. Um, I was surprised to know that, uh, they searched the entire country, uh, before landing in Clayton County because they were not in the U.S. at all. And, uh, we're very happy to have them, they're in District Two, in the Prologis Park. Uh, but they have, uh, company brands, but they have every name brand you can imagine. Um, but they want to do a grand introduction to the county. Uh, they're very much interested in getting, uh, involved in workforce development with our students. Um, it's an exciting site. I have done a walkthrough, but I will be planning one. When we do our big ribbon cutting, there'll be a tour where you see how eyeglasses are not only, uh, the prescriptions are fulfilled for sunglasses and eyeglasses, but they package them, cut the lenses, ship them out through the ports and through the airport, uh, to the tune of about 12,000 pair a day. And so it is tremendous. They also have a large bevy of ones where the prescription is wrong and they said they looked for someone to donate those to, like the Lions Club or any other group that collects, uh, eyeglasses that can help people who are challenged with their vision. But, uh, look for the invite for me as we plan that. We'll be having that and coordinate with, uh, the district commissioner, of course, and then some folks from the state. And, uh, we would like to, we plan to invite the governor down for this since this is a corporate headquarters location to the county. And about 100 jobs. Uh, GSC Steel Stamping, uh, this is a company, uh, that also moved in right about June, I will say. Uh, but they are, uh, they blew us away with their introduction of who they are. They impress and stamp auto parts, so they are in the category of advanced manufacturing. And, um, you see some of the brands they represent. They're adding Tesla and Toyota to their book of business. They are in Lake City. Um, the owners bought a company that was already existing in the county that did this work and they added, uh, their book of business to it. And so this is a lucrative, uh, company acquisition and they are looking for more space. So it's highly possible that they'll go and find a bigger building. They have about 150,000 square feet of space right now, but they're adding Mercedes, Tesla and Ford, um, to their book of business. But they stamp, uh, all the metal parts that are the undercarriage parts of the car in places that you, you know, if you're a car person, you might see it. I'm not, so. Uh, here's a picture. We are the state project manager, the development authority, the company owners are there in the middle. And then our project manager with the Metro Atlanta Chamber to the right and George Power, uh, were there for, uh, our meeting with them and a walkthrough to get familiar and welcome them to the county. Uh, the Toto Expansion Project you are aware of, which is in District Four. We're excited about this because again, this is another world headquarters and they are the world's largest plumbing manufacturer of, and supplier of restroom fixtures. So we are happy that they are trying to grow where they are already, uh, on over six acres of land, um, here in the county. So, uh, they feel that this expansion will help them produce their products using green energy and power. They already use robots for much of the molding and things that, uh, their procedures in making their product. So as you see, dignitaries from, uh, Japan and the Japanese consulate were here for their groundbreaking for the expansion. They also, um, this is the 50th year this will mark, 2024, of the Japanese consulate being in Atlanta. And so, uh, they want to come out, the Prime Minister, I'm told, wants to come out and visit the plant. So when that happens, we'll of course let you know and we would love to have the entire commission be there to greet them as they come. And the Japan Sun Times will be covering that. A note about Mountain View, you know, it is a target focus area, you know, as complex as it may seem in terms of how Mountain View came into being, it is taking shape. And it started, of course, with zoning and getting a master plan, which you adopted two years ago. But the Project Victory Landing, which you've heard about, it sits on 90 acres. It is an industrial project and it's the last bit of industrial zoning in Mountain View. It's a 700,000 square foot project that will encompass five buildings. They've already delivered two of the buildings. One is right at about 220,000 square feet. The other is like 150,000 square feet. And I'm told they have a one single tenant that wants to take that 150 square feet, which is, uh, gonna be great for us, um, in terms of who it is. Uh, but just want you to know, uh, that this development is, is, is giving Mountain View finally that action and that shape and, uh, formation that, uh, we've been wanting to see rather than riding through it and, and envisioning it as no man's land. Got another picture of the building. Let's see. Yeah. So that's just the, the corner of the building, the 220,000 square foot building. They estimate that whole development will be about 1,500 jobs. Average salary, Commissioner Davis, you just brought up salary, is about $56,000 a year. Um, these are distribution centers and warehouses. So that equals about 84 million in payroll a year and real estate taxes, 2 million a year. Uh, there is something called the ripple effect. Um, recently in a study that talks about, uh, for every 100 jobs in transportation and warehousing, it causes 276 indirect jobs to be created that will stimulate that local economy. So as you see, if you do the math on that, just on a general calculation, it's about 4,140 indirect jobs coming to the county as a result of that Victory Landing development once it gets built out to fullness. So, uh, the county has done its part in, uh, straightening out Gilbert Road and it looks fantastic in terms of the landscaping and the layout. On a business attraction side, just want you to know the project flow and the relationship with Clayton County and the project managers at the state is very, very strong. Uh, RFIs are requests for information and these are projects that, uh, the state sends to us. They use a code name. We don't always know what industry it is. We don't always know, uh, who the actual, uh, company themselves, uh, is. But, uh, here are, here are some, uh, that are listed there. And I had one because the state itself is a project. Where's that? Yeah, this one I want to bring up. Uh, the state itself has chosen Clayton County as its home, uh, for one of its offices. Just December 19th, they signed a 15-year lease, um, at 30, 1335 Citizens Parkway. And, uh, it will be their regional office for the Georgia Department of Community Supervision. And so that's kinda like a parole office, but it's 42 jobs and, uh, it will serve all of South Metro. And so it's just good to know that investment from the state of Georgia is, uh, in Clayton County and they looked all over. So, let me move on, get through this. A little bit about our business incubator. We had Kay West, our consultant, who we had on loan for 90 days, talk to you and give a presentation in December about her work with advising us, "How do you shape a small business incubator? What do you need?" And she suggested at the beginning of her work, this survey, so this is just currently, the survey is still up. I would love the citizens and business owners and those stakeholders in the county to fill it out. Uh, right now, these are the numbers. Uh, where it is, we're at 93% of what the goal was, but we were, we're still keeping it open for now. Uh, some of the top, uh, responses, uh, in the categories of, "Do we need an incubator? What services or amenities would you need? What hours are available? What would you like?" And they had many choices to choose from. It takes about nine minutes to do the survey, but, uh, these are just some of the answers and the results of those important questions that the county will have to face as it actually gets ready to open the building. Uh, the ARPA grant, as you know, you, uh, voted to give the Department of Economic Development $5 million in ARPA funds. We have spent 3 million for our small business grants, about 500,000 for nonprofits. And with our balance, we are doing our commercial beautification grants. We're very excited about it. We held an interest meeting on the 8th of December here in this very room and we invited our property owners of strip centers and shopping centers. We got that information from the Tax Commissioner's Office. And, uh, we also invited contractors that are registered through our SLBE program, those with the chamber, and then those who we dealt with on our small business grants. This is the flyer, so if you see it around, that's what it is. If you have a newsletter for your constituents in your districts, uh, let us know and we'll make sure you have that copy to share it. But the grant website is the same as it was for all of our other grants. It's businessgrants.claytoncountyga.gov. It is open. The 1-800 number is active as well. Uh, the eligibility for it, or, or outline here, we did put a copy of the packet in, uh, each of your mailboxes, but it's, if anybody has any questions, just have them call us and we're happy to go over, uh, what the eligibility requirements are. Uh, because funds are limited, we've limited it to shopping centers, 75,000 square feet and under. Uh, they must be in good standing with Clayton County on their property taxes or code violations and fees. Uh, we don't want them to have any, uh, vacancies. We want them to be 50% or greater occupancy of the tenants. Uh, they have to complete everything on the scope of work and, uh, the building or site must not be under contract, in foreclosure or for sale. Um, some disqualifying uses are packaged stores, adult entertainment shops, gambling activity places, gas stations, financial institutions, gun and weapon shops, and religious institutions or public agencies. Our timeline right now, since it's open, we told everyone their applications are due in February 2nd. And, uh, you know, we'll gauge it. If we don't have a good volume, we'll have to extend that. Uh, but we've given ourselves a month to review and then March 2nd, everyone will be awarded or notified if they're awarded. And, um, based on how much they're asking for, they will, uh, get credit. We're, we're asking them to do 20, to show where they've done 25% of what they're asking for, basically. So if they've done improvements over the last three years, those will count towards that 25%. So if they say, "Hey, well, we've already painted outside, but we need new-" So if they say, hey, well, we've already painted outside, but we need new doors or landscaping. And this is for exterior improvements only, so nothing mechanical. It can only be used for signage, landscaping, um exterior painting.
Is that it?
And I'm forgetting one. No, I'm sorry, no. Uh, here's an update on our bus tours, how that all went. As you see the numbers, it was great for all three. Ah, okay, okay, okay. All right, all right, all right, all right. And then photos here in review. Thank you very much. Any follow-up questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have one question.
I'm missing a slide.
Uh, first of all, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, go back real quick to the um funding. I noticed.
Right now, go. Right here?
No, go one more, ahead.
Ahead.
No. There we go.
Okay.
So I want to look at uh, first of all, I noticed that they have to be in good standing. But are we coordinating with um, I guess, uh code enforcement to ensure that those that really need this type of a grant are going to receive that option to participate first and foremost? Are you coordinating with them on that? Have you tracked that?
Yes, yes. In fact, we had a meeting, invited code enforcement, um community development, um our legal department, Ben Hopkins and his department. We wanted those who worked in that space to be a part of uh looking over our application guidelines and uh and all of that. And so we also are asking them to be on the review committee so that they're they'll be able to substantiate the good standing site. Um, it will, we were told we couldn't handpick shopping centers, which is what we wanted to do in the beginning because we wanted to have great impact. Uh, we were advised by our legal team here at the county not to do that, just to make it diplomatic, open it up.
I think there's a difference in handpicking versus making sure that the information that they've received that information. So I think we need to make sure that we're on that page. And legal is here. There is a quite difference between handpicking and ensuring that they have that opportunity because as a commissioner, we quite often end up with folks calling us at the last minute saying they weren't made aware. So we want to ensure that those that have quite a few violations or need help and especially those who have been business owners the longest in our community and made those levels of investment are made aware. So we want to make sure that on record that that is specified. Secondly, um I noticed the businesses that are disqualified um within that, and I agree. But I noticed nonprofits was not there because the nonprofits already get quite a bit of funding. They've gotten funding from ARPA grants. So did you all not consider nonprofits? Because you have churches, but they're also nonprofits that um maybe trying to utilize the funding. Have you considered the benefit of that or?
Uh, no, ma'am. We did not consider uh naming nonprofits as non-eligible because we are doing an entire strip center. So if they have a suite within a strip center, they that it's, the applicant is the owner of the property. But if a nonprofit owns it, uh they are eligible. If this body has some issue with that, we could look at it before we start the award and evaluation.
And in all fairness, we're doing this for a tax-paying um business owners. So I just think it needs to be taken into consideration. But we'll have an offline conversation because you just made a comment that I think that you, I want to make sure that you all took into consideration um when it comes to the qualifiers. So I'll be in touch. Thank you so very much.
Absolutely. Thank you for questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your presentation.
I'm missing a slide.
County Facility Master Plan update, building and maintenance.
You got a tie on, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. I'm excited to be here this evening. Uh, I actually have two presentations. This will be the first one. The second one is specific to the admin building. Tonight I have Randy Gibbs with me from the Sizemore Group. Uh, we're going to present to you as a precursor for individual meetings as it relates to the facility master plan. Uh, I'm going to talk about the process that we've done so far. Uh, Mr. Gibbs is going to speak specific to some of the demographic information and some of the um preliminary information they have. Uh, and our goal after this meeting is to set up individual meetings with you to discuss your vision for your individual district. From there, we will then, we will meet with uh the public, um but I'm getting ahead of myself, so. Uh, the intent is to create a sound, actionable, fiscally responsible facilities master plan that supports the entire county government organization and providing a safe, inviting work environment to meet the varying operational needs of all county departments. As you know, the majority of our buildings are built through the SPOS program. Uh, our next vote for SPOS is in twenty-six. We've done a facility conditions assessment that sees where our current facilities are. Uh, we're having Sizemore Group evaluate what we need. And then we will take that plan after you all uh give us an approval. And that will be the baseline as we look at our capital improvement and outlay over the, over the entirety of, the goal is for twenty-five years and it gets updated every five years. So far, uh we've met with individual departments. Uh, we're having this conversation as the precursor for the individual meetings. Uh, and then we would hope to be able to work with you all for a town hall meeting to meet with the public to understand what they're looking for from a service delivery strategy from the county to the individual districts. Uh, then we'll go through a second round of meeting with the individual departments to s- to ensure that we're aligned, making sure that you all are getting the final say before we come publicly and say, here's what the plan recommendations are so that we're all on the same page. Uh, the approach, again, going through, having those assessments of the current sites, looking at the demographics, analyzing what we have and making sure those standards are matching from state and other like municipalities. Um, from here, we're having this presentation. Uh, they'll give us some strategic options, uh and then we'll implement on the long term, looking at the twenty-six program of SPOS being the first capital outlay that's directly being impacted. Um, the core team is uh from the county is myself and Mary Butts within the Building Maintenance Department. We're having the routine meetings with Sizemore Group, the extended leadership team, uh being the department heads. Uh, and then we're meeting with you all for strategic direction. Uh, and from your strategic direction, we'll meet with the individual um citizens. Uh, Mr. Gibbs is going to, at a high level, go over some of the demographic information that we've had and allow you to kind of see how these things overlay. As um our chief uh economic officer was just talking about some of the developments that are already happening, we want to ensure that we're not operating in a silo. And so all of those different uh transportation master plan, the parks master plan, the comprehensive plan, which Sizemore is also working on for the county, are all aligning and so that our facilities are matching what we need, not just saying we're going to throw a library someday. Randy?
Sir, thank you very much, Ben. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you. All right, so again, Randy Gibbs with the Sizemore Group. Um, I didn't tell my jokes yet. Y'all already laughed. I like it. All right, um, so a- again, we are working um not only the facilities plan for the county, but also the comprehensive plan. And so what we're doing is taking it uh an evaluation analysis of all the existing facilities. That's, that is what we see here, all the facilities. And so you see in the legend the different types we have there. Uh, as Ben mentioned, we're taking a look at the demographics. We haven't had an opportunity to corroborate the data that was provided by Ms. Erica. But uh what we have here is um at least high-level demographics. And then next slide, we're looking at the census tracts. And so we pulled the demographics per census tract from a straight uh population count perspective. And that's what you see here. And so this chart shows uh the population per census tract. Uh, of those census tracts, we have about thirty within Clayton County that is actually losing population. So that's what uh this chart represents, excuse me, represents. You see the comments there? All right, and so I have three maps here. We have the population estimate from twenty twenty-three on the left. In the middle, we have the population estimate from twenty twenty-eight. And this is a projection, obviously, but that's the population estimate. And then the delta is in, is on the right, okay? And so what that shows is that down there in the panhandle, they are expected to receive the greatest increase in population between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-eight. And then up in uh the top right portion of the of the county, they're expected to lose the maximum amount of people uh between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-eight. Now that loss, uh we don't necessarily know what that loss is is, will be due to. It could be environmental reasons, it could be housing conditions, so on and so forth. And so that's not necessarily part of this analysis, but it is a projection of where um the population is moving between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-eight. And this is based off of national data coming from ESRI. Okay? And then.
Where did you get that from again, if you don't mind?
ESRI.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you say on record what is ESRI?
Uh, it's a national uh demographic and analysis uh system.
Good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
People will ask us.
Yes, ma'am. Um, and so that loss is is of the magnitude between zero and and a hundred. And then the gains, uh the maximum gains there between eight hundred and nine hundred. Okay, and so similarly, we looked at the median household income from the same dataset from ESRI. And so this chart shows where we, we, where we are anticipating uh uh change in median household income for this, for uh Clayton County between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-eight. Okay? So the same timeframe of the same census tracts, just with median household income. There is no loss in median household income, just some census tracts are gaining more than others. Okay, and so again, you have a twenty twenty-three estimates on the left, the twenty twenty-eight estimates in the middle, and then that estimated change uh is is on the right. And for both uh maps, for both sets of maps, for the population as well as the median household income, uh you have the cities within Clayton County outlined in yellow. Okay? And so you see where those changes are and where they, where they are with respect to unincorporated Clayton County as well as within incorporated.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Yes, sir. So on the maps, you see those areas that are outlined in yellow. Those are your, you, those are your cities, your municipalities. And so in each map, you can see where those changes, where the change is projected with respect to the cities versus where they are with respect to unincorporated Clayton County. Okay? And so we did, we're, we're, we're doing an asset-based uh development. We're taking that type of approach with respect to this particular project to see where we want to place or encourage, recommend uh the county to place their uh facilities. Uh, but again, also, we're working on the uh comprehensive development plan for the county. And so what we want to do is just make sure our two plans uh align uh as well as with our data sources. And so that's the reason why we went through uh that exercise earlier. These are the existing counties, excuse me, uh the existing assets. And so you see the the chart there. Uh, we are also aware of the Marty BRT project. We are aware of the the Terra Boulevard LCI project. And so we, if not, if for nothing else, we wanted to acknowledge uh the projects, the developmental projects associated with with both of those um initiatives. And so you see those there. Oh, excuse me. And then these are your existing assets um that that we, excuse me. These are assets that we are projecting based off of some of the conversations that we've had thus far uh for the comprehensive plan. And so these have come in conversations with uh some of you as commissioners, some of uh the county staff, as well as as other key stakeholders and and community. Uh, one uh point um in this, in the panhandle area, we were looking at creating a developmental node uh in that area for for uh market and commercial-based activities. It's just not shown here. All right, so here we are building all three of those slides together. And so these are all of the developmental nodes that we're considering, uh especially for the the comprehensive plan. But it also informs uh what we might make for recommendations in the uh facilities master plan as well. Okay? And then we're overlaying those potential developments on top of, in this case, the median household map. And then, uh, did I miss one? Oh, and then the, this is the the population map. Okay? And so all the the developmental nodes that we're considering for the comprehensive plan are shown here with respect to the uh population change map.
Real quick, go back. I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you tell us why this top-left portion looks different than the other? It doesn't fit within your thing. What does that represent? What is?
Because it's the airport, ma'am.
Yeah, so I'm, I just wanted to make sure that's why it looks different. So can you make, it's not on the, I don't see it on the legend, that's why.
Okay.
Because you have everything color-coded?
Understood.
And then all of a sudden, there's no color there?
Understood.
So if you could just go back and correct that, that would be great.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll annotate that in the map, yes, ma'am.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome, ma'am. Okay, um. All right, so again, all of the assets and potential developmental nodes uh with respect to the population change and then with respect to median household income. And again, these are your existing uh facilities within Clayton County. Oh, excuse me. All right, and this is all of it put together. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a mess, but it's a mess that we're trying to, you know, obviously make sense of and then represent to you. And then as Ben mentioned, uh we will come back to you and have um uh an intense dialogue with each of you commissioners and and sir, uh Mr. Chairman individually so that we could, we could discuss uh not only your district, but then also the county at large. All right, and then this is uh the top sheet of the questionnaire that we sent out to the department heads with respect to uh the facility master plan. And so we have received this back and we're, we're uh annotating their remarks and their comments about what they feel like they need uh for their current operations as well as for future operations. Uh, this is the chart that that uh reflects uh their comments. Okay, so that's what it looks like in general. And I'm having fun with the clicker. So these are the next steps. Uh, again, uh we'll continue to do uh our analysis. We'll get in front of you as individuals. Uh, we'll have uh at your, at your leisure or at your pleasure, rather, uh we'll get in front of community uh and then continue to refine our plan before making our final recommendations. Any questions?
Awesome.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner.
First, I want to give kudos, uh Randy, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I remember working with you when you came out to um District Three when we had our citizens there. And fir- and first of all, thank you for your service once again.
You're very welcome.
I think it's important for folks to know that you serve in a dual capacity as a reservist as well as uh serving government as well. Secondly, I want to commend you on the fact that we are doing something uh in in partnership with our comprehensive plan review. For a while, I've stayed in on this board since I came on. We have everything that we need to succeed in this county, but we tend to make decisions in silos or plan in silos as opposed to planning in a cohort manner. So I am really pleased with the fact that you all are working together. And I know with you working with Randy, is he still standing there? I know he's a stickler for accuracy. So um, secondly though, or thirdly, I want to, um, Mr. COO, I had stated for a while now, the importance um of us receiving presentation, presentations prior to them being presented. One of the things um that I love the most about serving on the ATL is that um they would actually make sure that each board member was aware of what was being presented. So that way, if there was something that we needed in addition to that presentation, then it would be added. Why do I say that? We got two presentations today. And uh, and the presentation that came before you, thank you so very much for it. But it's very important that we give accurate information and cohesive information, not different information. So that's just something that staff I've been talking about for a while, we need to do. I've asked that for board meetings as well as for um work sessions. Why am I saying that too? Obviously, there's a gap here. When we gave the presentation earlier, there was nothing about the growth in District Three. I noted that. And District Three, as we see, the growth is there. Not only is it there, but one of the largest projects, one of the first mixed-use Not only is it there, but one of the largest projects, one of the first mixed-use projects is coming in District Three on 1941, which has been in the works, and I see Rochelle Dennis out in the audience, who actually participated in some of those meetings. So we thank you so very much for your efforts. 1941 is the main corridor, and to see that that was not included in the prior presentation is of concern because it's important when we're talking about making good decisions, or as we learned with ACCG, the Association of County Government Officials, and the National Association of County Officials, we want to make what we call database decisions. And if the data being provided is not cohesive, not vetted, then our decisions may not be in the, in the best vein or facet. So I think that, Mr. COO, it's imperative that we go back and take a look at this information to ensure that this board is getting accurate information, and that every district and their growth is included. So I thank you so very much for that. I do have a question, however. One of the questions was with the asset-based development. If you could go back to that chart, real quick.
Is it this one, ma'am?
One, yes, that'll work. So with the asset-based develop, asset, sorry, asset, I didn't say a bad word, y'all, asset-based development, we want to ensure that the lower panhandle is served. A lot of times, we don't realize, but that panhandle area is nicely populated. I know they don't put a lot of strain on our service delivery, but at the same token, I do want us to make sure that we take a look at that growth and at potential growth. Why is that important? It's because on top of that, it abuts Henry County, so it's imperative that we look at it from a regional standpoint, and because Henry County has one portion of that large growth of a project that is going to, we call it the baby Avalon. For those who may not know, it's the Alpharetta area, I see you shaking your head, and that is coming down there. And so we need to make sure that we're planning in a cohesive manner with both the City of Hampton, with Cohelus, also with the City of McDonough, and so forth. And so we already have service delivery strategies in place, but I think there's an opportunity from us, from an operational standpoint, to really dig deep and start meeting on a regular basis with them, because else what we're going to end up with is a Molotov cocktail, and it's unfortunate, we kind of saw that in what happened in Griffin. And, and so most recently, we had to work with them, so we need to look at staffing or growth with a regional perspective in mind. The other thing I want to take a look at is if you go to our, we're still on the same page, I'm sorry. One of the assets that I want us to kind of keep in mind, I see the Newman Wetlands, but Ben, I would like for you to meet with the water authority, and I would like to see the overlay of all of the land that is owned by the water authority also included in that. Because even though they're separate from the county, again, it goes towards the regional development and planning. We need to take a look at that and overlay that and embed it within our assets. They are a separate board, but in order to make sure that we don't miss a step in the development that's coming on the Henry and the Clayton side, in terms of service delivery, we want to overlay those plans within there. And that's imperative, because we have nine months of water supply in the county, but in some areas, we may provide water, but the other county may provide the sewer. I know we do it through our technical review aspect with the zoning, but I think that there's an opportunity for us to kind of dig in a little bit deeper. So we can have some further offline conversations on that, but once again, kudos for this work, kudos for this information, and this gives us the ability as a board to really make that database decision, those database decisions. Good work, team.
Any other questions?
I'm impressed with Sizmore, by the way, too.
Any statements or questions?
Thank you for the presentation, sir.
You have a good evening.
Mr. Hopkins, you have the next presentation as well.
Board Commissioners, good to see you. So we always talk about the work sessions, made an opportunity to get it right. So Commissioner, I want to make sure that I'm reading the same information. You talked about the delineation between the Office of Economic Development presentation and what we're doing with the asset development component, which contains the building and maintenance.
Yeah.
One of the things we're trying to do about a job around is called predictive analytics. We're trying to figure out, how do we take the information that's happening in the future and make better business decisions moving forward? So as you talked specifically about the Office of Economic Development, you spoke to there being kind of a contradiction in, in information. As I was reading the Office of Economic Development slides, they talk more about the overall population growth, they didn't necessarily get into the districts. Whereas ESRI, through their predictive analytics, they talk specifically about our region by looking at land use plan. So one of the things we're doing, so that we can provide the board, under our Office of Resiliency and Sustainability, under David and that team, we're using ESRI as our primary provider for predictive analytics. So we have a foundation in space, so moving forward, there would be the baseline for all of our information, opposed to using different information sources to give the board predictive analytics moving forward.
And thank you for that, and I did note that it also give Erica kudos, though, she went all the way to some new information in terms of the growth, I give you that. But it's important to note that we serve the entire county. There was no information provided for District Three. There was no information provided for the LCI project for 1941, absolutely none. So it is imperative that you all know that. And again, if we would have had that ahead of time, then you all would have been able to see that, to make sure that it is given in a concerted manner. But thank you so much. This is a work session, this is just for us to get better on top of better. We're moving from good to great.
Sir, do not disrupt this proceeding.
So again, kudos to everybody for your work, we're just moving from good to great.
Mr. Hopkins? Good evening again, Board. Commissioner, thank you for the kudos. The asset-based community development is something that we've been working with Director E.G.K. on. The COO's office has created task force that are working on that, so that's also part of what developed towards that goal.
Awesome.
We went from a macro lens, looking county holistic, to now we're going to come micro. Same concept, looking at a specific site. The county administrative building is going to be the shining jewel of the county over the next 50 years. It is a magnificent building design that Nelson has put together for us. It is going to be across the street from Rock Haven Homes, which is a development that the Commissioner was alluding to on 1941. We've worked in concert with them to ensure that we're, make, that we are providing the utilities to be able to support the government site, as well as Rock Haven Homes. Worked with Water Authority and, and the Georgia Power and everyone else. But we do have some colleagues from Nelson here to speak specific to the admin building. There have been some minor adjustments within the building, as it has taken some time to design, so we've had to reevaluate some of the ways in which we were going to be working. We've also changed sites, so there is a large master plan that we are providing in that space. On this particular parcel is the pocket park for District Three. There is one going to be in each district. This fell in the census tract to be able to get that federal funding to be able to move forward. So I'm going to turn this over to Claudia. She's going to come up from Nelson and give you all a quick overview of where we are and our next steps, so we can move some dirt and have this great building going up this year.
Awesome sauce.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and rest of the Board of Commissioners. I think Ben already said a lot of my presentation here.
Roll through it.
Like you said, my name is Claudia Haynes, I am a Senior Project Manager with Nelson Worldwide, and we are doing the architecture and interior design for the new Clayton County Administrative Building off of Terra Boulevard and Old Poston, Old Poston Road in the city of Jonesboro. With me today is Katie Langob, she's also from Nelson, and she is a project manager heading the interiors design efforts of the project. So we're here to present the project progress and what is going to evolve in 2024 and on the next coming years. So like Ben had mentioned, we had developed a master site plan in the corner of Terra Boulevard and Old Poston Road. The site included the administrative building, surrounding parking, a future fire station, and a couple of building pads that would be constructed in the future. The idea is to look at the entire parcel as not only the administrative building, but as the entire development. And ever since, we've been coordinating with the city of Jonesboro to determine what variances would be needed, how to permit the project successfully. We've also been able to do the site survey of this 19 acres of the site. We have conducted a geotech report, and we have confirmed soil requirements for the building foundations.
While they were working on site and changing all of that, we didn't want the interiors to hit a lull, and so during that time, we reconfirmed program requirements, who all was moving into the building, and so we spent the summer of 2023 confirming all of that, and later in this presentation, I'll walk you through some of those changes.
Also, in the fall, we did do a revision to the master site plan. Like Ben mentioned, we included pocket park amenities spread around the parcel. We have so much space, and it is a great way to fill in the gaps around. So in the next few slides, we'll show you what that latest master site plan looks like, including the pocket, the pocket park amenities. We, like Ben mentioned, also coordinated with Rock Haven Homes and Clayton County Water Authority during the fall, and Civil has finally started their construction documents back again, taking all of those design concepts and everything that we've been working on the background, finally into drawings. We have also been able to update all our interior floor plans, and in December, we issued a 90% set of construction documents for review and coordination. And we are currently continuing to further the conceptual design of the pocket park. There's an ongoing coordination with the Fire Marshal regarding the site plan, making sure that we have enough access for the fire truck and the fire apparatus to go around, where the fire lanes go. We have also submitted all our documentation to the city of Jonesboro for needed variances. And we are also currently working on developing furniture packages for the building. So in this next slide is the latest conceptual master site plan that includes the pocket park amenities that we've been discussing. To the right-hand side or to the east, we can see the biggest building is the administrative building. It has not changed position, there is parking all the way around, and the main entrance is off of Old Poston Road, you can see it lined with trees. This road will eventually go through the side and come back out, and the idea is that when it comes back out, it's going to be really closely aligned with the entrance to the Rock Haven Homes, the development that is south of Old Poston Road. To the left of that, we have three future building pads, and we have our first main amenity space for the pocket park. In this space, the, it has been programmed for a stage structure with an adjacent lawn, which you can see in green. I don't, but it's in the, right in the south, above Old Poston Road. This will be a gathering state, a gathering space and a picnic space. There will be sitting areas right around this, to be able to put tables, chairs, et cetera. There's a straight, direct connection between the administrative building and this first lawn area, there's a pedestrian cross that leads you straight, straight down to it. The other three buildings are located around this area, and then we come to the left, where we see the orange structure is going to be the future fire station that we have been planning all along to go on this parcel. Right above that, north of that structure, is going to be another gathering pavilion and adjacent restroom structure with an additional lawn areas for a variety of community events. And all around the site, we'll be providing 10-foot walking trails. So as you go out of the county administrative building, you'll be able to kind of go around the side and do a loop, a walking trail back to the building to get a little bit of exercise. There's also some exercise stations around that trail. And left or to the west of the site, we have our stormwater pond. This has been there all along. I don't think it'll get completely filled with water, but it'll be just a, a place to walk around. There we go. In this next slide, we're showing just the phasing as how we envision for the site. The areas in white are what we're calling Phase One. These have been, always been included in our, I guess, in, in the site. It comprises of the building, of the main administrative building and parking around, and the stormwater pond, and then we're calling Phase One B, the green areas, which are the areas that have the pocket park amenities. Both the green areas and the white areas will be all included in our permit drawings. Everything that is in blue right now is for future. We are not developing any of that currently in this project with Nelson. This is what we expect to be permitting in the next month, that we're going to go in for, permitted with the city of Jonesboro. So this is what the site will probably look like when we're done with Phase One, which is all of the administrative building and parking around, the lawn area to basically the center of the site, and to the west, the second lawn area with restrooms, picnic pavilion, and stormwater pond. Just to refresh a little bit, I know that you have seen these images before, these are the images of the Clayton County Administrative Building, a little bit from afar. This is from Terra, from the corner of Terra and Old Poston Road. You can see on the, on the left bottom-hand side, the entrance to the site. And then these are a little bit more of a close-up images of the administrative building and surrounding parking. And Katie's going to talk a little bit about what's going on on the interior.
So as we mentioned, over the summer, we spent some time reconfirming program, reconfirming who all was going to be moving into the building and what they needed out of their spaces. There was a little bit of juggling, juggling that happened. Economic development came out of the building, and we moved internal audit into the building, into a portion of their space. And with the leftover space in there, we've provided a multipurpose room that can be rented out to the public and used by the county as well, that you see adjacent to the lobby in that gray shade. The rest of the first floor has remained largely unchanged. We have clicker-heavy buttons. On the second floor, this is where you see the majority of the change. Finance went under, underwent some heavy reprogramming to make sure that all of the departments were laid out. We pulled the Department C-suite to the front of the suite for, they wanted to have that presence at the front for, to welcome people coming into the center. And just rejuggling some things, making sure that everybody has the privacy and security that they need for the sensitive information that they handle on a day-to-day basis. And along with them on this floor was the HR department. And then the last floor, this is just a rehash, essentially of what you've seen, the Commissioner's suite is on this floor. You'll see on the roof terrace, some furniture filled out in that space to provide you a space to have meetings that are a little bit more informal, enjoy some of these nice views that you're going to have with the pocket park and things like that. And then we rounded out a little bit of legal space and had some additional meeting with them to confirm their needs and correct their offices. And then, again, renderings that you've seen, just wanted to put these back fresh on your mind, of the lobby when you first walk into the building, the lobby looking back at the entrance from the Commissioner's meeting space. An office suite, this, this specific... Uh, an office suite, this purpose, this specific rendering is of the COO's office. And then a typical conference room that you would see in the space. Uh, for our next steps in the spring of twenty twenty-four, what we're working on next is zoning variances, conditional use approvals. We're gonna submit one hundred percent construction drawings for permit, and we're gonna start bidding for a contractor. Over the summer, we expect contractor mobilization to begin. This is where you're gonna see them moving on to the site, prepping. This is where we're gonna see dirt moving and everybody's gonna start getting excited for what's to come. Construction will begin, and we expect the building to open with a ribbon cutting in twenty twenty-six. Do you have any questions?
All right. Any questions?
Yes. All right. First of all, thank you again. I think it's important for us to realize um that this administrative building is actually going to round out our development of um not only the newly IT, new IT building, but also the government center. So then we'll have like a one-space, a one-stop shop for people to go to, which is really nice. They don't have to drive all around the county to do business with the county. Want to ask the question about capacity and for growth. So what is the maximum capacity of the building that we're planning for?
Uh.
In terms of, have we talked, broken it down in terms of employees and so forth? Cause we're looking at departments and divisions. That's important because we want to build not just to today, but also to future growth.
So part of programming was to plan for growth over the next ten years. That is included. Um, we don't have it called out specifically on the plans, but we did work through with all of the departments to make sure that all of their current employees had a home and then does identified the empty desks, so to speak, that would be filled in the future. Um, something that's highlighted on the bottom right portion of this plan is what we're calling a shelf space on the plan. Uh, that is for growth for the overall building. So if one of these adjacent departments becomes larger, or if an additional department needs to move into the building, there is space for them to do that.
Okay. And then once again, bring us back, Mr. COO, to the importance of correlating that growth because we know that we're looking at, along with Sizemore Group, for the service delivery and on growth of the county in, in general. So maybe I would like to have an offline conversation to see how we've correlated the information. And I'm glad you all are doing it, but to look at what those actual numbers are in the next five years, ten years. Um, because as we know, a lot of times we build these buildings, and I love the extra pads there, but I'd like to know where we are in terms of number of employees, future employees for each division, and then also how it correlates to the growth that has been provided to us through the Sizemore Group.
Great question, Commissioner. Um, presently, when you talk about the, the expansion of the departments that will be in the new admin building, we're looking at roughly present day, somewhere north of about five hundred employees.
Okay.
Um, however, we did take into account with the growth of the county and different positions and being innovative in that space, you're looking at potentially anywhere between a ten to fifteen percent growth space within the building itself during that period of time. So as Nelson so eloquently outlined, um, we did contemplate that, that as we need additional space then, so be it. I'm smiling because as we talked to finance and HR, um, we talked about the Hatfields and McCoys. Um, so they wanted to make sure that, because they're dealing with sensitive information, and I totally can justify that. But initially, we looked at it from a standpoint like a Google or looking at an Amazon where you had this open space and you had shared space. But some departments can't have shared space cause the sensitivity of that information. So we specifically had ensured we had growth opportunities for those departments cause the, the security and safety of that, with those respective departments.
I wish you wouldn't have chose Hatfield and McCoys, cause somebody died there. He could've chosen a different one, Mr. Dietrich.
You're correct.
But anyway, that's a good one though. My hat's off to you for that one. The other thing, it's a little, just a tidbit, but I wanna remind us that our uh actual official seal of the county must be included. Um, it's great that we've done this rebranding and added an airplane in our um logo, which we don't control airport. But anyway, the official seal of the county must be included, and that's something I had to bring up when we were doing that before. I think for whatever reason, people weren't aware of that. So I didn't see that in the renderings. Um, the seal must be included for all governments because that is a part of how we uh exercise our home rule. Um, one other quick point, just want to say that this is perfect timing with the LCI uh growth project. And I, you kept reiterating about the new um project that's coming up with Rock Haven, but I want us to keep in mind, for those that are watching, that part of Rock Haven uh Homes Project is going to have that Heroes area, which is specific to our um employee, government employees, firefighters, police officers and so forth, and educators. Why is that important? Because those are the ones that are gonna create sustainability so that we can sustain our new restaurants and shopping. So we want folks to be able to come to work, be at work, drive a golf cart, a scooter, a bicycle, save on gas, and then go and shop in their county. That's how we're gonna increase, um, you know, our income and, and really, um, our revenues rather, and create a sustainable community. So once again, Mr. COO, you get three checks today.
Thanks, I just wanted to iterate, as you talked about the county seal and the use of the county seal versus the logo, the seal would be certainly more prominent in the actual chamber for the commissioners, like it is here. Um, and then of course, the logo was looked upon other places. However, we certainly can change what this board desired it to be. So if we need to make those changes from an aesthetic standpoint, we certainly can do that.
Awesome. And I'm glad you said that, cause that's, we're gonna look into that for best practices to see how we can best do that. One other quick note, side note. One of the things that I noticed when I was doing my research up in uh a lot of areas that have been developing for the last fifteen to twenty years, which seems to be up north and in Fayette, and now Henry County is kicking our tail, uh, they take stormwater ponds and use those as a site for people to be able to come and enjoy themselves. Let's make sure we do that here by adding a water fixture and then the seating around it. And maybe I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Awesome. Awesome stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so very much.
Right. Any other questions?
The last thing I wanna say, Chairman, um, so that I can, you all can move on, there are a number of presentations ahead. Um, the intent here, again, as we're talking about these future building sites, is when we look at the twenty-six PLOS program to continue the momentum on this site. So some based on the Sizemore Group's findings and their recommendations, we will most likely be looking to continue the development of this site from that twenty-six program because we have the twenty-six, the thirty-two, the thirty-eight, that the Sizemore Group's program will be informing directly. And every five years, we'll come back and update based on what we've done and where we're going.
Awesome.
Thank you much. Thank you. Let's go to the next presentation, uh. Incubator partnership with the city of Forest Parks. Good to see the mayor Butler. Good to see you, and I see you roll deep when you roll up in here, huh? All right, I'm not mad at you. Mr. Clark.
Police chief.
Yes.
Forest Park's chief.
Chief Chris, good to see you as well.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board. I'm excited that I have an hour to present to all of you. I would've dared. Um, but no, first I'd like to introduce, so that this commission, um, because you guys do so much throughout the county, I'd be remiss if I did not introduce some of our executive cabinet members that are here with us tonight. First, of course, our CEO, Mayor Angeline Butler. We have our chief of police, Chief Brandon Chris. To my left, we have our senior management analyst, Ms. Pauline Warrior, our economic development director, Mr. Bruce Abraham, our capital projects manager, Mr. James Shelby, Ms. Rochelle Dennis, our project manager, as well as Ms. Savan Irons, um, within our community, planning and community development department. We are indeed excited to present this potential partnership with Clayton County. As I've sat through the presentations on tonight, I've heard several buzzwords from sustainability to equity to really looking at data to drive what our free to hold. And we are confident that the project in which we'll present to you now, this food incubator right hand the city of Forest Park will align and parallel just with that. So I'm not sure if I'm controlling.
Did you bring your finest fee for all our folks you stole from us, Mr. Clark?
I don't steal, I just believe I provide environments where I can get the greatest talent.
Mr. Chris.
No, ma'am, I love it, Commissioner Frank.
Mr. James.
Thank you. But no, just to give the commission, I'm gonna run through this really fast, so if I'm talking fast, just let me know. First, as you know, Forest Park is the largest municipality in Clayton County. We are nanoseconds away from anywhere you want to travel in the world. One of the beauties of being last with the presentations is that you get to hear everything before. And in multiple presentations, I've seen where Forest Park businesses were listed as the top five of whatever it was, from Fort Gillum to the Atlanta State Farmers Market to Jones's Place, Star Park, and the Gillum Logistics Center. This year, we are seeking to break ground on close to seventy to eighty million dollars worth of partners, worth of projects right there on Forest Parkway, including the new Forest Park City Center, which will comprise all of our offices, um, this incubator space that we're going to share with you on today, as well as the city just acquired multiple properties right there on our main street and we're in the process of awarding those developments. Next slide, please. Our beautiful mayor and council members, of course, we are governed by five members of our governing body, as well as our mayor, each representing their respective wards. One of the interesting things about Forest Park is that we also are privileged to have two commission districts that cross over our, our city, both Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Hambrik, who have both in my nine months there been a God saying to our community. So moving on, so today, the purpose of us, in fact, looking to do, do this incubator space, I've heard several of the commissioners say over the years, the importance of not only thinking about what new developments we can bring in, but thinking about how we do adaptive reuses of properties that we already have. So right there on Forest Park Day, Parkway, there was an old dilapidated ride aid facility that no one had used for a number of years. Since that was the center point for all of our future development right there on, on the Parkway, we decided to purchase the entirety of that property and renovate it. When we look at data maps talking about food deserts, one of the things that it's attributed to typically in poverty-stricken communities or communities based upon census blocks, you recognize that our access to food is not the same as areas where there is more um per capita income in those communities. And so in working with our governing body members, we said instead of trying to encourage people just to come to Forest Park, we're going to take our resources and do it ourselves instead of waiting on the private sector to come in. Because as we talk about the success of Fort Gillum and the over eighty million dollars that have been invested there and the over billion-dollar impact that it has on our community and all of these houses that are coming in so that we continue to diversify our housing portfolio, the question is, where do these people eat? Right? Coming from the county seat going north, you recognize that your opportunities for food is just limited. So we're trying to, in fact, do a facility um through the help and partnership of the county and our Clayton County Hub Program to solve that once and for all. Next slide, please. Areas with high poverty rates are more likely to be food deserts regardless of rural or urban designation. As I hear the community, the commission talking about all of the work that you guys are doing from the south side of this county all the way to the north side, there in Forest Park, Clayton's largest municipality, we just wanna show our commission where we're doing our part as well. The project that we are going to show you, we applied for a CDBG grant. We in fact showed that we could get the project done, do the work, and do reporting timely. A large part thanks to Ms. Linda Boswell for all of her continued commitment and dedication to ensuring that your local municipalities understand how those funds are to be utilized. So here I'll show you a closer look at the new space. If we'll go back, there is a video embedded in that slide. And Commissioners, this is the Forest Park Grapevine. So this is entering the ride aid facility there on Forest Parkway. As we walk into the space, we wanted not only just an incubator space, but a multipurpose space. So what you're looking at now is us redoing the inside so that you have a area for gathering. On the inside, similar to Punt City Market and Crock City Market, you have just that open area. Also, we recognize the need for adult beverages at times as well as flex office space with people not going back into general C-suite offices. We just want to be able to do everything inside the facility. So a bakery, a coffee shop, an area for large conferences, as well as a three-restaurant food terminal and a culinary kitchen for those individuals that may not have proper business licenses to sell their food. This allows them one space under one roof where they can come in and do it with a shared commissary kitchen. This is something that you will not find in Clayton County as it is now, when these individuals, especially as we kick off the year, many of us partake in the Daniels Fast, for us to get meal prep, typically those individuals that are doing, that are doing it illegally without the proper licenses. And so what we're trying to do in Forest Park is ensure that not only do we train them as to how they get brick and mortar, but we allow for them an opportunity to come in and rent the culinary kitchen, cook your wares, and distribute and sell them out as you may please. Next slide, please. So within this facility, it houses not only... It's a total of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty-four square feet um for this total renovation of the ride aid building. Again, the dual kitchen incubator, it goes back to the point of we're trying to provide a incubator space to where individuals that have good skills with cooking have a facility where they can come and do that legally, as well as leverage partnerships with Clayton State University to get individuals to come in and run this space. Similar to what you see down on Punt, at Punt City Market and Crock Street, just a food vendor space for individuals, let's just say Commissioner Hambrik has a nice pound cake that she wants to make, but Commissioner Hambrik doesn't have the capital to go open brick and mortar for a true bakery. She's able to try her hand, build a base, and then move outside of this incubator space and open her very own bakery, instead of us allowing people to fail. And then last but certainly not least, there in Forest Park, we did not have any true coffee cafe for individuals just to come in and enjoy a good cup of roasted coffee. And then last but certainly not least, our elected officials wanted to make certain that we had a space when we were having events for individuals that wanted to partake in the sprites and beverages, that there was an actual bar vendor space as well. I see Mickey give, Miss Mickey Garber liked the, the space. Commissioners, one of the things we wanna, one of the things we wanna share with you when we're looking at this, we want it when individuals came into the grapevine, if you can remember the song, I Will Not Singing and Bored You There, but heard it through the grapevine. We want, we wanted individuals when they came into this place to recognize that you don't always have to go into the city for quality of life. We wanted to ensure that from architecture all the way up to interior design, that it spoke to the corpse of the positive and aggressive vision that we have there for our community. In addition to the culinary arts, we also have added in here creative studio space. One of the things, when I first entered this county roughly a decade ago, there was a lot of talk about real art. So as I've matriculated through this community, we see the need for just creative spaces for individuals that just are artsy throughout the county, not just centralized right hand the heart. Also, as you know, with COVID, we learned of the growing need for just flex office space because people learned that we can in fact work remote and not have to go into office space. So this building will allow individuals to rent the space, go in for a day, have a meeting, and again, you're not having to pay for the brick and mortar of a monthly lease to, to do that. Our schedule. So we are already in the process of getting the construction drawings done for this incubator space. When we met with um Mr. COO several months ago, one of the things that we assured him as we were awarded the CDBG grants was that we would be good stewards of the money and ensure that this wasn't just a project that we talked about and stayed on the shelf because we wanted to show that our government doesn't believe in the F-on-the-shelf approach. We in fact wanna take it from plan, from vision to project to execution. And so we right now have executed a task order agreement to move forward with finalizing all of the construction documents to be ready to present this for final bid in April of this year. While it seems like a very aggressive timeline, all of the work has been done by these amazing individuals sitting behind me, and we're just excited that we're able to potentially partner the Clayton County to ensure that in one of the, in one of the largest areas of the county, that we are once and for all solving the inherent need to have more food options. And I hope I stayed up under my time limit. I think I had twenty more minutes.
You did all right. Any questions for Mr. Clark?
I do.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Clark. I guess, what type of partnership are you looking for from the county? And also too, have you spoken with our economic development director to find out, how does this conflict or enhance the thought of us doing an incubator as well?
So I think Mr. CO is probably better suited to answer that question. With us, um, one of the things, so I did not initially know about the incubator space in the detail that I had today, but I think in looking at what I saw earlier, there could be potentially some synergies, but there are also several differences.
Commissioner, I think, um, the spirit of the, the question, um, when Mr. Clark came and provided the vision around this, this opportunity, they had a project ready. the vision around this, this opportunity, they had a project ready. We recognized at the time, the incubator was still in processing. So what we thought was important, that one, we got some, some collective guidance from our leadership, Mayor Butler played a huge role in making sure the project was a go. And then we pulled Commissioner Anderson into the fold to make sure she was good with it because it was in our district. But as it pertains to duplication, we don't look at it as duplication, we look at it as innovation in our county. We recognize that there's never going to be enough need as it pertains to commercial kitchen space for those that don't have a brick and mortar that needs it. So if we end up providing that additional space within our incubator under the Office of Economic Development, it only will be an enhancement of what's happening in Forest Park opposed to a contradiction or duplication of service.
And that's what I was looking for, how it can enhance. Yes, we do need these type of services here in Clayton County to begin to uplift those that are seeking to get into business, and I, I love that idea. I just want to make sure, not with the duplication, that whatever we can do to enhance what they're doing in Forest Park, and Forest Park can also enhance what we're doing to work collectively from that standpoint.
Uh, yes, so where is the grapevine?
So the grapevine is on Forest Parkway, right beside the Forest Park Recreation.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's Commissioner District Two, right?
You're on the other side.
On the other side.
So we have another project and we're planning to meet with you about next month, one that just came out of the ground. But this one is on Commissioner Anderson's side. Yes, ma'am. It's like you got split right in the middle of Forest Parkway. Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
I just want to say also, Mr. Chairman, thank you for using those CDBG grants. Great job, Ms. Boswell, for everything that you were doing with that. Like I said, it's time for us to be more innovative in Clayton County, and what we're doing, like you said, we're dealing with those food deserts. There's also, I know we talked about some young people, and our young gentleman, are they brothers or something like that? So, and they, they look like babies, but they, they do cookies, and they're going to be coming in there and they're going to be creating their own cookies. Can you elaborate on that and how it's going to help just our young entrepreneurs and our entrepreneurs as a whole?
Yes, so I'll defer to our project manager, Mr. Shelby, but you are right, it is a worldwide company, and these younger kids distribute their cookies all over the world. Mr. Shelby?
Yes, it's a family, and the smallest child is three years old, and the oldest one is fifteen years old. And I think they had about a million dollars in sales last year.
Wow.
And so they're very successful, and the, the, the parents actually keep them balanced, but they actually are the, the face of the company. They actually run the company. As a matter of fact, they've been, they were on Ricky Lake Show, they've been on a lot of TV shows where they're trying to help other young children to become entrepreneurs.
And the other thing, that's what we're looking for, just that innovation to find these individuals within the county that have the talent but just may not have the capital to do it. This will be an opportunity for them to build their brand and then move from this culinary kitchen, commissary kitchen, I'm sorry, or even one of the rented food court options to actual brick and mortar.
And what I look at is kind of like a small Chattahoochee Works, but with the business aspect all in it together. So like I said, thank you guys, thank you so much for just building upon this and putting this in the community. It's much needed, and again, it's going to push Clayton to be greater, so I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And one of the things Mayor Butler always tells our administration, we don't just want to be known as the world or the largest city, we want to be known as the city that has partnerships all over. So if there are individuals that you have within your respective districts that you know would benefit from a facility like this, we would like to know that ahead of time so that as we push forward in this endeavor, our goal is to break ground on this, this year. Well, I guess it's not breaking ground to start all of the work because the building is already existing. And so if you know anybody, it would be amazing because we want to make certain that the space, the space is used, and I can share with you for lunch, Chief Chris and I typically are searching for food because the options are just not there, and you have over three thousand employees at Fort Gillum, and if they want to eat healthy, it's just no real opportunity.
And we also have, we also have a lot of warehouses in District One, Ellenwood, Fort Gillum, all the way through, and that's the complaint, we have nowhere to eat, we know, we have nowhere to live, work, eat, and play. So we're going to continue to push this, and I appreciate, again, everything that you all are doing to move the county forward. That's what we need.
Any other questions?
Alright, Mr. Clark, thank you for your presentation, and don't think I didn't, don't think I didn't take notice that you're wearing your Clayton County pin. Good job, guy.
Yes, sir.
Alright, let's go to trash collection overview. Uh, Masio?
Alright, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, I'll take up the, the balance of the other forty-five minutes we have left.
I don't think so.
No?
You got ten seconds.
Ten minutes? Okay, got it, we can do that. So we've come before you this evening really to bring you an update on the operational expenses associated with the residential curbside. We'll kind of get into the details of the presentation, but the primary, primary goal here is to outline additional operational expenses that support facilitating such a service. One of the questions that in our November work session, Commissioner Franklin inquired about ensuring that we can make informed decisions, is important that we have all the information in order to do that. So we'll be providing you the additional operational costs that we feel like will support the facilitation of the haulers within the county. Second is the project benchmarks post adoption of the RFP twenty-three twenty. We'll talk more about that timeline that we came upon once we put out the RFP. Then lastly, discuss the SWOT analysis of potential impact of onboard in the residential curbside program is the goal. So first, the benchmarks from the RFP from the twenty-three twenty, as you all remember, we had a team conduct the kickoff, kickoff with staff back in January twenty, twenty-two, pushing two years now. And I'm not going to bore you with all the details about what went into space, but there was a lot of questions that were asked to include one-on-one discussions with each of the commissioners about what was the tenants of the residential trash collection? What are some of the things that you thought were important in building it out? And from that, we developed what we call an RFI, Request for Information initially. And then from there, we went forth with a request for proposal for which March of twenty-twenty-three, we received responses from four haulers to, that really responded to that RFP. From that end, we made a recommendation to you in October of twenty-twenty-three. From that, there was additional questions about the, the process that we went through with the RFP. We came back to you in November with the work session, that now a call for additional costs as it pertains to operationalizing that. And then today, under the work session, we'll talk to you about more of the operational costs associated with that. So, you have the raw data with you, I didn't feel compelled to put in the, the number of positions that corrections had in space, but you have that raw data on the dais for you to review. But I did provide, outline costs for that. So correction staffing to support such an endeavor as it's presently being presented for correction staffing is roughly five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. The equipment associated with that, which you see an asterisk by that, will be a one-time expense of three hundred and eighty-six thousand. The tax commissioner, who has been very gracious, and Ms. Wood has been very gracious in communication with us about helping facilitate this program, the cost for the, for the staff, for the tax commissioner is roughly a hundred and seventy-six thousand. When you talk about the equipment, it's something right at about a one-time expense of roughly ten thousand dollars. The fee associated with the tax commissioner is twenty-three thousand. When we talk about printing and postage, when we talk about getting information out to the citizens about the details of when we will start onboard in the billing, the cost for that is roughly sixty-one thousand, when you're talking about a one-time distribution out to our citizens. System implementation, here's the work with Tyler, when they're talking about getting the billing out into our system and working in tandem with our tax successor, our tax commissioner, and our IT department to really get the onboard in of that, a one-time expense of fifty thousand. So the total initial implementation cost is roughly one point two million, and then you're talking about the annualized cost for that, when you remove the one-time expenses, you're talking about annually roughly eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars annually of the cost that would be above and beyond what we're paying the hauler to provide this service.
Can we repeat that again? It's above and beyond?
Yes.
So we've already gone and calculated, I apologize, so we've already gone and calculated the fee that we put out ahead of time versus this amount? Can you show that breakdown, or should I get it later?
The breakdown for the operational costs or for the haulers?
For the, okay, we're getting, you've given the proper information, which is great, thank you. So now what we've got to do is take this information and offset it to what we're collecting. Have we already done that is my question?
I'm providing additional information in the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
So to Commissioner's point, then, when you take the operational costs that I already provide you at the annualized cost of a hundred and forty-six thousand, here's what we're looking at, the cost, the expense associated with the contractors by district. You're talking about twenty thousand plus parcels in District One, the annual expense is four million six seventy-four. District Two, expenses is three million seven thirty-nine, two. District Three is five million eighty-four. District Four, four million five eighty-two. When you look at all those parcels, you're looking at residential parcels, parcels, looking at roughly sixty-seven thousand parcels that we'll provide in this residential curbside collection too. Now, the difference here, in the eighteen million dollars we're talking about here, we're talking about a collection rate in between ninety-three to ninety-five percent. So ninety-three to ninety-five percent of that will be collected from the citizens when you're talking about, when we set the nineteen dollars per month, and when you annualize it, that's two hundred and eighty-eight dollars a month, times the seventy-nine thousand parcels is where you get the eighteen million dollars from. So we, we recognize that we will collect maybe anywhere between ninety-three to ninety-five percent of that eighteen million from the citizens as it pertains to the expenses associated with the contractual services.
Did we also add in the variance rate for the, the amount that we're unable to collect?
Yes, well, so the ninety-three thousand, the ninety-three percent or the ninety-five percent is roughly a seventeen million dollar collection. So you're looking at a shortfall of roughly a million dollars because industry standards are showing us, no different than, than property taxes, you don't have a hundred percent collection.
Correct.
So if you imagine, and we looked at similar, similar communities, and we can provide you those communities that have done these programs, they've had anywhere between the ninety-three to ninety-five percent collection in getting the funding from their citizens in that space.
But, but one thing, and one thing real quick to keep in mind though, is that there's a recourse of action where what you presented to us before is that for those who do not pay, we did not have a recourse of action. So then we need to look at it more conservatively. I see the tax, Assistant Tax Collector back there, or yes, from, remember you from Fulton, by the way. But the point is, we need to be more conservative with that, I think. I think that you're on the right path, but looking at apples to apples as opposed to apples to oranges, we probably need to look at an eighty-two percent collection rate versus a ninety-three, but that's just me throwing out a number. Let's talk about that offhand.
So, so the goal here is, again, you asked that we provide you some context to what additional expenses should we be contemplating above and beyond the contractual relationship with the two haulers, if in fact this board sees fit to move forward with approving the vendors at the next board meeting on the sixteenth? Because we're trying to move this process forward, so let me provide you.
Got it.
What we're showing as a summary. So again, in summary, you're looking at eighteen million dollars plus in contract expenses associated with the vendors, looking at eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in operational costs. And I put in parentheses, the cost, the cost fluctuation varies depending upon the billing frequency. So part of our next steps is to talk about how frequent will we bill? Is that an annual cost? Is that, is that biannual? Is that quarterly? The more you provide billing, the more cost you have with that. We've been so gracious that our tax commissioner saw the, the value in helping us with this process, and based upon the billing cycles in space, her recommendation is that we do it annually. Well, the con to that is that if you're looking at an annual billing, then you're looking at a more of an upfront cost from the citizen for the annual billing, so you're looking at, at a minimum, the two hundred and eighty-eight dollars annually upfront in order to cover that expense. And that's not including if we make the determination to add, an admin fee on top of the actual nineteen dollars a month. But don't let me get ahead of myself. So we anticipate in a collection of ninety-two to ninety-five percent, again, that's roughly seventeen million dollars, so we got a debt of about nine hundred and four thousand dollars annually based upon the non-collection rate. And again, I just wanted to reiterate the annualized bill cycle, without there being additional costs added to the bill would be two hundred and twenty-eight dollars per parcel of the citizens that are in unincorporated Clayton County. And again, as another disclaimer, the following analysis does not account for any service fees for enhanced services to this program. So again, if a citizen say, I want backdoor collection, I want white good collections on a certain day and time, they'll deal directly with the vendor and pay the vendor those funds, we won't see any of the costs or any of the funding for the enhanced services, but they will still be paying the base services at that nineteen dollars a month, times the twelve to get you to two hundred and eighty, to two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So, one of the things we thought was important, look at industry standards and waste management and provide you a SWOT analysis. The strengths associated with this program is that, one, there will be every residential parcel has a trash service. There's no doubt in our mind that we don't have to worry about whether or not somebody got trash service or not, because this program will ensure that. There will be consistent fee structures for all residents. Whether that fee is, it don't matter if you're in the north end, you're the south end, it don't matter if you got two haulers that provide a service and nine haulers, the fee that you pay will provide you that base service regardless. We talk about the public health and safety component. We recognize that there has been a correlation of those communities that do not have what they consider consistent trash service or some way of qualifying the beauty of their community, there's a correlation in the health of that community. So by having this in place will help us from a health and safety perspective. And then lastly, the obvious is reducing waste and promoting recycling. If we recognize that even somewhere between five to seven percent of our citizens presently do not have trash service, then the legitimate question is, well, what are you doing with the trash? So the weaknesses associated with this is costs and financial challenges for the county. Commissioner just alluded to that. We're talking about a nine hundred and eight thousand debt potentially where people are not paying, then how do we go forth to ensure that we have services in place to make ourselves whole, or if there's some enforcement arm in place to ensure that we can ensure that that nine hundred and eight thousand dollars is being collected? Logistical challenges, when you have a new vendor that's providing a new service and you have less trucks on the road, certainly there's a value in the roadway being of value, but now we've got to ensure from a logistical standpoint, those things that you say you can do as a contractor, you actually can do it. So logistically, we got to make sure that we put things in place to address those needs so our citizens are comfortable with the role that we're playing in providing the services that we've outlined. And lastly, policy and statutory enforcement. Part of the, the post approval of the board with regarding the, the haulers, part of the bigger discussion is about what are those policy implications in place that we have to approve to make sure before we put the first truck out on the street, that the policies that are in space are reflective of ensuring that we can do our job efficiently and effectively. When we talk about opportunities and threats, and I'll go through this quickly, there will be a reduction of frequency of the haulers on the roadway, that's an opportunity. Private assistance with addressing quality of life by having the private sector out there in the community, helping us be the eyes and ears to some of our community problems, certainly will help us, not harm us, as it pertains to the countywide initiative. Capital investment, job creation, we can't lose sight of the fact that because of this innovation, there is job creation in space, and then hopefully those individuals that need jobs in Clayton County can see this as an opportunity from a job creation. And lastly, the threats, the public relation challenges, we need to be very succinct about how we communicate our message, we need to be comfortable with how we communicate that and ensuring that things that we say we're going to do, we should do them, whether it's a website, whether it's a twenty-four-seven phone number that a citizen can call to make sure they can get their questions addressed timely. Infrastructure limitations, clearly we have a relationship with a vendor, so the infrastructure will be highly contingent upon the vendor being able to provide infrastructure in place. It's not the county's infrastructure, it's the private sector's infrastructure. So when they have problems with failure in their system, we're going to fill the blunt of that, because we the one that has contracted the services, so we got to make sure they can carry through with the things they say they can do. And lastly, projected changes in the waste management industry, there's been, there's been discussions about how that industry is changing, and what they're recognizing in a lot of municipalities throughout this country is that they're losing waste management professionals throughout the country, and their ability not to provide the service for a multitude of reasons. We don't have what we consider a, a base of, an employee sector in space to protect those workers, but at the end of the day, if they feel like they need to walk off the job because of compensation pay and some other things that might be an issue for us later on down the road, then clearly that's something that we have to be mindful of. So we'd have to make sure there's some stability with our contractors when they're looking at employment with their sad employees.
When you say something, there's nothing we can do other than them implementing a union of some sort. Let's be real about it as opposed to kind of just throwing it out there, you know?
Well, also, one thing that we talked about with the haulers were them doing a second chance program, and that would be for people who've been incarcerated that don't, have not committed heinous crimes, and allowing them to get jobs through those haulers as well. And they do that in DeKalb County, so that would be a, I would say a strength for our, for our haulers in getting those young men and women who have been incarcerated and that want to work into those jobs, so.
Good point, Commissioner. The DeKalb model, it gives an opportunity to be able to employ those individuals directly because the, the DeKalb County Waste Management Program is facilitated through the county directly.
About the county, that's so key.
The, the difference for us is that we are contracting our The, the difference for us is that we are contracting a service provider to come in, and we're at the beck and call of their ability to expand that job service opportunity to those employees. But Director Rogers and her team has been, been very vigilant in that space. The haulers have tried to figure out creative ways to help us to ensure that the things that we talked about contractually and non-contractually, that they want to be a steward and be a asset to change agents within the county. So we feel like going back and having that discussion post-approval, that ultimately, we feel like they're, they're willing to do some things that we didn't talk about that was on the initial contract.
I have, if I could piggyback on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I am so glad that you made that distinction. We don't want to give anyone a misconception. There is a distinct difference between governance and free enterprise. Distinct difference between governance and free enterprise. So we are not following the model of DeKalb or the other cities. So when we're talking about a program such as that, that is at the liberty and at the will of private free enterprise. But as a county government who has contracted with them, we are taking on all of, as you said, the threats. So the threats are good, but I think we need to also segregate them out even further to understand those which we can have specific as well as, what I would say is measured influence towards versus those that we don't. We don't want to look at making a decision based upon a pie in the sky of what we hope that private enterprise would do. Because when we do that, then we are really getting in the space of not understanding the difference between governance and private enterprise. That's number one. Number two, glad that you came back with all of this information. It does help us move forward, or at least as we talked about earlier, to make data-based decisions, so glad. Other than looking at a more conservative amount of collections versus non-collection, did we have a chance to look at if legally we could not include this cost within our, our annual operating budget? Not legal, so did we take a look at that? Because obviously, we are incurring a cost and cleaning it up right now in the manner in which we're doing, as the sheriff said, about the tons and so forth.
Right.
So, and, and I know you've done a lot of work, so I don't know if we've gotten to that point to explore the cost being added to A, the operating budget, or B, the, looking at utilizing HUD funding underneath the fact that we would have last to come out of the economic slump with housing, and also the fact that we have the most rental properties.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a next step, or have we looked at it already?
Both. Yeah, so great question. It would be a budgetary impact. The eighteen million, we a budgetary impact as it pertains to covering it because it's a contract. It's a contract with a, a vendor that has been vetted through the procurement process. And so there will be a contract cost, and we will then govern ourselves accordingly about how much we should set aside to cover that. Whether that, that, that debt ratio is at a ninety-five percent clip, or we need to drop it down to eighty, we need to make sure whatever that gulf is between the two, that we have funding in space to cover that. Secondary to that, the operational costs. So if the board sees fit to move forward with saying, hey, let's move forward with these haulers as outlined, understanding there has to be additional work we need to carry through the remainder of twenty twenty-four, then those respective departments that you saw to outline eight hundred and some odd thousand expense coming from will be submitted into FY twenty-five budget. Because none of this will have an impact until July of this year. The haulers and any of that, clearly we have to do some onboard and do some, a lot of work to get us there, but the, the financial implications won't go into effect until July of this year.
And it's going to be very important for, I see Stacy, to make sure that we separate these costs out and through the enterprise fund as well. So as opposed to leaving it just as, within the entire operating budget. So then it's, it's assigned to the enterprise fund as a possibility. And then the other thing, in terms of a third opportunity for finding funding with the new infrastructure funding. Let's see if we can leverage, as you all were looking at, offsetting some type of investment level. I think you all were looking at that previously. Let's see if we can explore that. I do want to have an offline conversation with you on this. I promised before, but I'm back in town, and I really want to dig into the numbers because I think there's an opportunity that we can make it a win-win-win situation. Also, Madam, oh, I didn't notice that both of them were there, I apologize. I think that you all's fee may be a little bit too conservative as well. We need to go back and look at that and then overlay those costs with the potential growth for the next five to ten years. And then, Mr. COO, you're going to have an ironclad, you know, presentation. This is good work.
They're here for moral support.
First of all, I want to talk about government versus free enterprise.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand what you were saying as far as what the haulers decide that they want to do, but that is something that we need to consider throughout the county. And, and the haulers can make that decision true enough, but that is something that we've talked about as well. So they do, they are willing to, some of the haulers that I've discussed it with, they are willing to do that. And so I want to put that on the record. That's been a discussion. So when you're out here and you're in the trenches and you're talking to, to the haulers and making sure that we're getting things together, that is one of the discussions that we had together. So I don't, you know, you know, thank you, Ms. Franklin. Your, I appreciate your opinion, I appreciate your opinion as well. But I'm working in the trenches to make sure that we look to find these young men and women jobs within this county and making sure that they get what they need and that we have people in place for this. So I want to make that distinction.
Good point, Commissioner, you're a hundred percent correct. Your, your point was simply that there's an opportunity for us to figure out
Exactly.
if there's other opportunities to bring in individuals in the fold regardless of what the stats are saying about individuals not being in space. So we certainly will have that conversation with them as we talk about negotiating that.
This is not a competition, we're in here trying to make a difference in this county.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hambrick.
Yes, Mr. COO. Did we say that monies from the citizens will be paid to the haulers or to the tax office?
To the tax, so right now, the framework they're looking at, the Tax Commissioner is when, she, her point was, I'm already in the business of collecting funding and serving opportunities for delinquency in space. Why should we recreate the will when I'm already doing that? So we're very appreciative of the fact that she saw the value in doing that. But yes, once the billing cycle goes out from the Tax Commissioner's office, she will be responsible for a collection. And as we talk about what our process is for delinquent folk, then the Tax Commissioner Office will help us with that as well.
Okay. And this is, I mean, it's minor, but in your discussions with the haulers, can we make sure that the trucks are kept up to date, you know, looking clean and all? Because, you know, right now, one company I know has done a, a good job in getting new trucks or whatever, but we are paying for it. And I'm just looking at this fee here, and I mean, it's, I'm almost paying that quarterly. So I mean, when we really get this thing going.
Branding was a huge discussion with the haulers about look and feel, if you're going to represent the county in that space. And they, so they understand the value and how important it is that their look and feel is important. Not only your timeliness in picking up citizens' trash, but also when you're going, are you clean? Are you representing the county the way we want you to?
Mr. COO, can we, can we hear from our tax?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we do that, if you don't mind.
I'm asking to hear from her first.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. First of all, hold on, hold on, first of all, if you want Commissioner Smith to come forward, then yeah, let's address that through the chair seat and see if she wants to come and speak in the first place. And then secondly, well, first of all, Commissioner Smith, would you like to come up and address any questions? No, if you decide to come up here. No, you're good? Well, thank you. And they can always contact you offline. Okay. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I'm hearing this about what haulers can do. I'm just not one of, of purposing business and being a delinquency of a vendor. Whether they keep their traps, their trucks clean, or whether or not they even raise their bills. We're, we're too much at the delinquency of a vendor is one of my issues with this. And the other one is this, I'm really not a fan of putting a trash collection bill on a tax bill.
But that's why, but that's why I need to hear from her, right there.
My, my issue there is, we have many seniors that are at a level with their mortgage to where they have no space. And if they have no space, and that two hundred and eighty-eight this year takes them over that amount, what's going to happen to their mortgage? It's going to go up.
But it's not going up.
Thank you.
Explain that, Mr. COO.
So Commissioner.
Go ahead, Mr. COO.
So Commissioner, the, the Tax Commissioner Office is the facilitator of the billing. They're not leveraging the property taxes in order for that, for that to be an issue. So if somebody's delinquent, they won't have a property tax lien on their property for being derelict and not paying their bill. She's only serving as the conduit for getting the information out. So they will get two separate bills. They'll get a bill associated with their property taxes, they'll get a bill associated with their waste management disposal. And now the question is, which we have to determine post the sixteenth, again, if this board sees fit to move forward on providing the haulers that service, the board will make the determination about the policy stance you will take on, how do we enforce those individuals that are not up to speed or derelict in paying their, their, their waste, their waste bill?
Okay, and my thing is, to me, that needs to be addressed upfront rather than after the fact of, of what's going to take place with that. District Four, folks have trash collection. So my thing is, does this handle the litter problem? I believe the answer is no. This handles simply some dumping. You know, and when I drive down the streets, I see more litter than I do see bags of trash.
I don't.
All due respect, Commissioner, as I've stated before.
That's a polit, that's a decision of the board.
That's a policy decision of this board. The operational staff has provided information based upon the context of what you provided to us to bring you back some recommendations as to how you need to address it. If the board wants to move forward with a different policy decision, that's the board's decision. But again, we've tried to provide that information so that you're not making a decision in a vacuum. So ultimately, your vote is your vote.
I understand, and so my whole thing, work session is to voice your opinion and begin to figure out if we can answer.
Yes, sir.
I've been waiting.
COO, have we been in talks with the cities? Because all the cities are doing it, and how they are collecting, you know, on the delinquent bills and all.
Yes, ma'am.
Has that been in your talk?
It has been, and part of the appendix that you all have, it reflects all what, all the cities are doing and how they handle the delinquency and the, but again, so the pros and cons of that is that there's more costs when you're going after someone that's a delinquent and not paying. You got to find a mechanism in place to be able to go out and get that collection, so there's more money, right? To get, it's probably sometimes less money. On the flip side of that is that, are you good with, to Commissioner Franklin's question earlier, if you know that you're going to have a debt to carry somewhere of five to seven percent, do you automatically forgive that and keep it moving? I don't know. But again, we're in a position in our policy discussions here in the next couple of weeks, in the next month or so, we'll bring forth those items through our legal staff attorney around those things so you all can contemplate that to determine what you think is the best fit as it pertains to policy decisions.
Do we have maybe a somewhat timetable? Because I'm getting calls and inquiries as to when are we going to start this? Because people are not wanting to pay this increased quarterly bill, which is myself and all, so.
Well, I'm glad you asked, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, one second.
Go ahead.
I've been patiently waiting, before we get to this part, because I have a question for you pertaining to what you've already presented.
Okay.
Now that we have all of this information, I have concern of what was being voiced. So first of all, I think we all need to be aware that during the RFP process, there's not supposed to be any conversations going on. And that is dictated by the state and federal government, that's number one. Number two, we finally have all the information. So as we stated before, we put out a request without having all of the information supporting it. That's number one. The second thing is, when it was presented to us, it was two providers, and it was just going to switch if one doesn't provide the service. That still hasn't been addressed. And so for that, for me, because we're a board of five and we all got to have a vote, I think that in order for this to even have a fair chance and for us to make sure that legal keeps all of us in a space to where we're not in a known space of liability, we need to send this back out to bed. Because you can't have somebody say, do a request for information when in actuality, we didn't have all of the information. So that's a concern for me, and we could talk about that offline because it is very clear, if there are folks on this board having conversations with specific providers, then we have violated some things that we need to be very careful of. So we will talk about that offline for sure. I am all for starting somewhere. I could tell you that ahead of time. All for starting somewhere, because the one thing we got to understand, we're eating that cost one way or the other. Whether we're eating that cost by sending our code enforcement out there to deal with it or our sheriff's office to deal with it, we're eating that cost as citizens. So the problem is not going to go away. But what you've presented today allows for me, as my one little vote, to be able to be better informed, to make a data and analytical decision. So I thank you for that, but we could talk offline on the rest of it. Thank you so much for what you've done. Kudos.
Go to the next slide.
Okay, well, real quick, before you do your slide. I think there was a question, too, regarding where the haulers will take the trash and all. About the landfill being.
It's outside the county, they're not utilizing our landfill.
They're not, okay.
And that's important, though, if we can piggyback on that from Commissioner Hambrick because we have people on our board here that are on our Waste Management Board. And prior to me becoming on this board, the previous board under the chairman and others, they increased that cost for the landfill. So the citizens need to know, this is not going to have an impact on our landfill, which also extends the life of our landfill, is that not correct, Major back there? Would you say that that's the case? Awesome.
I was looking at the transportation development.
Please proceed.
Let me respond to that one point, Chairman, just for the sake of clarification. Remember, this is a residential curbside program. There is still representative of parcels, about eighteen percent is commercial, right? So they're still utilizing, whatever vendor they're utilizing to come and get their big trucks, they may or may not be utilizing our landfill.
Correct.
So just recognize that, that won't go away a hundred percent.
Correct.
Because we still have a commercial collection that's still in space that has nothing to do with this residential program.
Glad you said that, too. We need to also receive, again, what we voted on, because if I'm not mistaken, I made a recommendation that a certain parcel would be, which is basically, what was it, a state residential, which is any parcel that, I think it's over, what is it, one acre or two acres?
I don't remember.
We, that's imperative for us to consider. So we did exclude those partial, parcels of, I think it's a state residential, because those are the ones that would be down in the lower Panhandle part or even the Ellenwood area. They would not be affected by this. It is imperative that we know when we're looking at making this decision that it's all for the parts of the county that have a higher level of density where a lot of this trash is. Okay.
Okay. So the projected implementation timeline, again, tonight, we're talking about the board. The work session about those other elements as it pertains to operational costs. We anticipate putting back on the agenda on the sixteenth, the board approval of the contracted haulers. From February to April of this year, we're looking to have policy review, adoption and creation. So what are those areas around the policies that we feel like are going to be very pertinent to being able to implement and get this program up and running? From July twenty twenty-four, we'll begin the system testing and implementation. There's where we're talking about our work with Tyler and ensuring that there's continuity in the Tax Commissioner's office and how they work with the Tax Assessor's Office and how they work with IT and all these other moving parts that we've been working in conjunction with those haulers through Central. July through October twenty twenty-four, we'll develop a communication campaign to our citizens, that's a website. We're going to have FAQ out there, frequently asked questions about what to anticipate once the, the actual system starts. And we're anticipating a trash service beginning sometime in mid-October or November. Now, part of that policy discussion is that we'll make the determination, do we do this before we start collecting? Because part of this is, as you talk about a peak season for the Tax Commissioner Office, July, and this time period is a very peak season for them with property taxes. So piling that on may not be, make for an efficient onboarding. So they may not start the collections until January. But if we start the services in October, then what we're doing in less, in essence, is floating that until such time. We feel like it's pertinent to move forward with the service. That's only a suggestion, that's not necessarily saying that's the direction we're heading in. But again, there's something to contemplate as we talk about how we onboard that. If in fact we make the determination to onboard this post the collection, then that probably won't take place until February or March of twenty twenty-five. So with that, any questions?
I think we're going to ask all the questions.
Great presentation, great job.
Any other questions?
I have one last question.
Yes, sir.
For those that do have trash service and they're.
For those that do have trash service, and this, let's say, was going to begin, they'd have to cancel their trash service by November in order to start another trash service by whenever that start date is.
If that's the policy decision of this board.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Let's go to public hearing signs, zoning matters. Mr. Jiki.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, good evening, and a Happy New Year. This is my first time of coming to the meeting this year. The last time I was here, I had two presentations tonight. The last time I was here, I presented zoning sign postings, and I was asked by you all to go and answer some questions. So I'm back tonight to answer those questions. Signposting, it's something that's part of our code, that if this is approved, it requires a text amendment. And I'm just going over what I presented the last time before I get to the questions you all asked. And the purpose of this presentation is to get approval to initiate the required text amendment. So the last meeting, these were the questions that was posed to me, and I was asked to come back with answers to them. First question, what other jurisdictions in the metro use positional posted signs? Cobb, DeKalb, and Douglas Counties? How much per sign does it cost the county for each sign? It's thirty-five dollars. We currently incur that cost. We carry it in our budget. Next question that was asked, how much is our zoning application fee compared to other counties? We fall within a range of fees. The algorithm and the nuance of each county is slightly different, but I'll show you kind of what the range is. The last question that was posed was, what efficiencies do we gain by using positional initiated zoning sign posting? More time will be dedicated to actual zoning analysis. It takes about half a day or a whole day to put signs, regardless of who is doing it. So this is summarized chart as to the research that we did, we called different counties, and to figure out how they doing, what they doing. The top row shows you the county we looked at. We stayed with counties and not cities. We were doing comparative size type research. Signposting responsibility, our proposal is to use the applicant, and you can see Douglas, DeKalb, and Cobb are using it. When it comes to the zoning application fee, you can see the ranges, and the ranges here don't quite explain all the nuance of what they're doing. There are different things, they charge for more and less, but we are within those ranges in those counties. And the signposting fee, what ours will be is thirty-five dollars, and that's what we currently pay the vendor that we're using, which is a vendor within the county. And those other counties, it doesn't apply. We think that the fee for their sign production, because they do produce that, are embedded in the fees they charge. That's who, again, that's where you have the various ranges of things. But Gwinnett and Cobb have a deposit of hundred and fifty per sign, and that's what they do. So that's the, let me go back there, that's the research I was sent to do, and that's what we came up with. But more importantly, we'll spend more time doing the work, because in what we do, you guys are familiar with it, and most people are not. When you see the final product, there's a lot of work that goes into doing that, and it's constant work because of the cycle. So we're trying to spend more time doing the work than doing it. And also, one of the questions you asked earlier, do I answer it? Should a sign fall down or blown away? We just inform the applicant to go fix it, and they are interested really in fixing it because it's part of the noticing requirement for the zoning procedural law that they have to do in order for you all to have the hearing. So that is my presentation for the sign part.
Any questions for Mr. Jiki?
So I do have a question, Mr. Jiki. Patrick, let me ask you a question. So the thirty-five dollars, are you proposing to the board that it's going to be included in the Clayton County application fee? What are you proposing?
We're going to call it a signposting fee.
Okay, so they'll have it, it'll be separated out?
It will separate out from the application fee. It's going to be called a signposting fee, so they know what they're paying it for. And we are requiring them to get those signs from, they pay the fee when they apply, we send the sign to a local business that we are using already, because they understand how we want it, then the applicant can pick up the signs from us.
They will pick it up from us or the vendor?
I'm sorry, they'll pick it up from the vendor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's just a minor logistic.
Okay.
There's a huge, thank you for that information. There's a huge difference between the thirty-five and a hundred and fifty per sign within Gwinnett. The thirty-five dollar fee, I would like to, again, we'll talk about that a little bit more, so we can look at the numbers a little bit, if you don't mind.
Okay.
The other point is to, I think it's important, I would like for you to define who is "we" and "they," because last time we spoke, when you talked about the number of people in the division, majority of what we're discussing now is being resourced out, and we just renewed their agreement, because I did talk to that vendor. So if you could, for the record, help us understand exactly who is "we" and "they." You use terms "we" and "they," because I think that we're using a contractor?
Madam Commissioner, do you mean in this presentation or before?
No, in this presentation, when you use "we," you used "we" in a couple of places and "they," but you didn't state who "we" or "they" were.
The "they" will be the counties that I'm referring to, what they are doing that we are proposing. So the "they" in this presentation, I'm referring to other metro counties, what they are doing.
No, let me go back and be more specific. Whose responsibility was it prior to now?
Oh, prior to now, the responsibility, it's the vendor that is our consulting firm.
That's what I wanted to know.
Our collaborating firm.
Because we just renewed their agreement, and so with the renewal, did it already have this within thought process? Because we're removing a duty from them.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, good.
It's part of what the agreement is right now.
Okay, so you've already removed, you said agreement right now?
No, no, no. The renewal currently includes them doing that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that will be something that Central Services will look into in terms of the procurement.
Okay. The reason I was asking that, what I'm going to suggest, as opposed to putting the responsibility on our staff to ensure that the signs are posted, maybe as opposed to within the agreement of them having to post a sign, that that contracted vendor would just be responsible for giving reports that the signs are posted. That's why I was asking those questions.
Yeah, whoever ends posting the sign usually takes a picture of the sign and sends it back to us, so that when we get a call from the citizens or even from a member of the board, the first thing I check, did we have an account that this sign was posted properly in the first place? That means we didn't miss the posting. The issue is what happened to it?
Got it.
Then we'll go from there.
That's awesome. So we could just amend the agreement and include that under their responsibility, is what I was trying to say.
Yeah, the responsibility for posting sign is currently in the contract for our current vendor, but we want to shift that to applicants doing it.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for your presentation. I believe you have the next one as well.
Yes, sir. The idea is to amend the frequency of our land use changes. And there are two points I would like to reiterate from my last presentation, really. The first bullet point allows for implementation of the comprehensive work, comprehensive plan work program. That is where the vendors tell, or rather, give us a guideline of how to implement the research, and that takes time. So if you're building a house and you go get a permit, midway, you start changing the floor plan, you'll never end up with the same house. It's just that simple. The last point is, currently, we are too focused on parcel-based land use changes. It doesn't help what we are preaching, the economic development ideas. We have very good visions. You saw some presentations this morning, this evening, rather. All that is geared towards economic development. The idea is, how do we safeguard that process so that what you hear eventually happens? So it moves us from looking at particular parcels and having a more area change. Is it good for, what are we changing? We cannot change one property. We want to say, does it make sense for the area? And this is an example of the work program that we usually get at the end of a comprehensive plan. It states how the goals, short-term, midterm, and long-term goals. The question that I was asked when the last time I presented was actually one question. How will potential project delays be handled? And the answers are, applications submitted before enactment, when this gets approved, will be honored. We will give adequate notice to applicants as to what the county wants to do. So once we set up the schedule, once we're doing the text amendment, we explain what the schedule is, so everybody knows given ample time, that they have several months to understand this is how the county wants to move forward. The plan is for it to coincide when our comp plan is due to ARC, which is in October. So do all this and make sure that we give ample time, so that once it starts, we don't have any areas of projects that require land use. We've already have internal discussions about how we look at land use. Thank you to the board. You guys approved a planning, a senior planning position for us that's going to really pay attention to planning. And the second idea here that we want to do, in conjunction with it, is commit my department Office of Economic Development and Development Authority. We collaborate to have a project economic development impact matrix. That allows us and gives the board the leeway to move. If someone walks in here and presents a project to the county that has a viable economic impact, which is all we all are preaching, this allows the board to, once they meet this impact matrix, for the board to initiate whatever change it is that will affect that project, that will make that project come to fruition. With that, we're not going to delay when somebody comes with something that's substantial, something that really makes a difference in the county. The board can act. The board still maintains that power to go ahead with that project, and they will vote on it and will move on. That is really what that is. My plan is start talking to those two areas of the county that we, and also, more importantly, this becomes like something in their toolbox when they're negotiating projects, and somebody's saying, okay, if they meet the matrix, this is what we're going to do for you to bring you into the county. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Jiki?
Why are you looking at me, Mr. Patrick?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Board.
Traffic calming devices or presentation, Mr. Tarko.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to try to speed through this for y'all and me.
Glad you didn't come up any with that FSU again.
Okay. What is traffic calming? There's various definitions out there. The most succinct one comes from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. It's a combination of mainly physical measures that reduce the negative effects of motor vehicle use, alters driver behavior, and improve conditions for non-motorized street users. It's used to address safety aspects along a road, vehicle speed, traffic volumes. Sometimes you've heard cut-through traffic, noise and air pollution. It also goes back to the livability of a neighborhood, walking, jogging, biking, those types of things. Generally, it's not considered a traffic control device, so it's not in the same realm as like stop signs or traffic signals or markings on the road. And one thing about it is, there's an art to it. There's not a finite solution, like this one fits all. Each location has different characteristics. When you're talking about retrofitting a existing subdivision street, where the curves are, where the residential driveways are, where drainage structures are, each location, it has to be viewed individually. Generally, there's five categories. You can lump a bunch of what we call measures together. Listed there, horizontal, vertical deflections, street width reduction, routing restrictions, and then non-physical control measures. There are pros and cons for each that I'm going to quickly run through. Acceptance varies on traffic control, on traffic calming devices. Some people love them, some people really hate them. The first set are horizontal deflections. Common names, traffic circles, median diverters, splitter islands could be used. You can see some on the pictures up there, I've shown some examples of traffic circles and median diverters. The premise is a vehicle would have to slow down to a safe operating speed to drive through the measure. Kind of the object is, the more of the horizontal offset over the distance influences the speed the vehicle can travel through the measure. Generally, as you can see in the pictures, the islands have some sort of landscaping or signage, and it's to assist with the visual recognition of the measure as a vehicle approaches. In the circles, you know, on some of theirs, you have a mountable curb, concrete area in case there's larger trucks that need a little bit more room to maneuver. Next one is vertical deflections. Common names, speed humps, speed tables, speed cushions, raised crosswalks, raised intersections of no, I'm not talking speed bumps. Typically, these things are three to four inches in height. They some have a parabolic shape, about fourteen, sixteen feet long. Some of them have a trapezoidal shape with a flat top section that people ride on, and they're usually generally longer, about twenty-two feet. Similar to the horizontal deflections, the premise is a vehicle would slow down to a safe operating speed to traverse over the deflection. Typically, studies have shown, it's the safe, normal operating speed is about twenty-five miles an hour. As you can see, they can incorporate color in the pavement to attenuate either a crosswalk or, in one of the pictures there, you can see a raised intersection for visual looks of it. The next example will be straight width reductions. Some common names you might hear are chicanes, lateral shifts, chokers, choke points, single lane points, lane reductions. single lane points, lane reductions, and lane narrowing. There's a whole bunch of different names you can run across in literature on this. The premise is a vehicle would have to slow down to a safe speed in order to navigate through the measure. In some cases, it may even have to stop to yield to oncoming traffic. As you can see from the pictures, most of them involve some sort of landscaping, of course, along with signage and some pavement markings. We'll get into this a little bit more, but you can see some from some of the photos, they're pretty drastic measures to try to get people to slow down. The next section is routing restrictions. Traffic calming is not only used for speed, but cut-through and volume reduction. Some of the names you might hear are diagonal diverters, turn lane restrictions, forced turns, street closures, median barriers, and cul-de-sacs. I've given you some representations up there, but they're more drastic in a really limit how people access properties and roadways. The implementation can vary quite a bit. Some of them are obviously more aesthetically pleasing. You can see in the bottom-left corner, they just use some sort of flexi-post material to block off a road. The premise behind these is the vehicle's path is modified. Accessibility is changed. And you might find these more where you have neighborhoods with cut-through traffic issues. The next one is the non-physical. Some people might refer to it as psychological measures. Obviously, we have a very robust...
We've used those.
We have a very robust speed limit signing program within our county. Street signs, I mean, we've got about thirty thousand street signs in the county. A huge portion of those are speed limit signs. Obviously, police enforcement is a method. We have speed awareness signs on here. You can see one's an older-style trailer that you pull behind and station along the side of the road. And the one in the bottom-left is actually a sign post-mounted thing that shows your speed. On-street parking of note is considered a traffic calming measure, and it's promoted in various cities around the country. It gives a sense of road narrowing. Reasonable drivers know that there's a lot of activities adjacent to the road, and they have a tendency to slow down. And then you can compare this to a road that might have clear shoulders and wide-open areas. People don't see hazards, so they have a tendency to drive faster. Also, in the bottom-right-hand corner, you have street trees. That's also considered a traffic calming device because it gives a sense of a road narrowing, and people have a tendency to drive slower. Next slide, not-traditional traffic calming. So these slides are to try to differentiate what some people consider are traffic calming mechanisms. Obviously, I put in the bottom-left there a speed bump. Although there's match in height to a speed hump, about three or four inches, they are usually only nine, twelve inches, sometimes eighty inches wide. It's for parking lots where you go, you know, five miles an hour, ten miles an hour, something like that. It's not applicable for public streets. In the middle-right, you have rumble strips. We've heard that before to, you know, grab people's attention, make them slow down. Well, one of the premises in traffic engineering is you want to make sure you give warning to an event that you're going to see forthcoming, a specific event. You just don't give general warnings about roads. Rumble strips are used when you go around a sharp curve or if there's a stop sign that's hidden or by accident history people continuously run through. You put rumble strips in those situations to call, to bring to the attention they're coming up on a situation that commands their notice. It's just not something you put along a road to make people slow down because they're uncomfortable on it. Top-left corner, stop signs. This is probably the most misconstrued item in the public about put stop sign out there, they'll slow down. Stop signs are traffic control measures. They are regulated by Federal Highway Administration, and they are adopted in our manual and uniform traffic control devices. There are specific warrants that we have to follow in where we put multi-way stop signs up. When we start talking about liability of things improperly placed, stop signs actually can create more accidents than they might be able to solve. But the warrants associated with stop signs are usually volume-based warrants because they regulate accessibility. They're not intended to put, to slow down traffic. Studies have shown where people have tried to use multi-way stop signs in succession to slow down traffic. If motorists are inclined, they actually go faster in between the stop signs. They have to make up for their lost time. Top-right corner, children at play. This is another thing that is not regulated in our manual and uniform traffic control devices. It's a controversial item. I'm happy to tell you, we do not have any of these signs posted in Clayton County. They're non-unforcible. They don't convey a clear message. And actually, they actually promote people's idea that you can play in the street, and that's not something we want. Similar to the multi-way stop situations, studies have shown that they become non-observant over time. Once they're up, people get used to it, and it doesn't convey a message of where you might see children. Children could be anywhere. In a residential neighborhood, a reasonable person should expect children to be out and about. So they're not considered a traditional traffic calming device. So what do we have in the county? And it looks like the translation is two pictures did not show up here. So you've seen them before. On each side, there was pictures of the speed awareness signs, the your-speed signs. I apologize for that translation. But we do have, through the police department, they have a program where they go around and put the your-speed radar signs up, and we have one permanent site on field or road. The top-middle sections are actual pictures of streets in the county where we have the median diverters or the traffic circles. They are included in our land development guidelines for subdivisions. They've been included for many years. Not too many developers have taken us up on it because it's not a requirement to put in it. We have had, over the years, poor luck at getting them to actively put them in. Some subdivisions do have them in there, and they do work around those areas. Then, obviously, the most obvious thing is the police enforcement. Okay. Previous street speed hump ordinance. The county had an ordinance back in 1995. Adopted, approved, implemented. I gave you some bullets there, kind of the gist of it. Petition-driven program, had to have a certain speed that we did speed studies for over the speed limit, and there was a property tax assessment to cover the cost of it. In 2002, it was deleted. It was rescinded. There wasn't, my best recollection, there was only a handful of locations around the county that had speed humps at the time.
Was it something about the liability, that people were filing claims?
There was some issues at the time. Even though I wasn't the head of the department at that time, there was some concerns about... Georgia DOT came out in the old, if you remember, the LARP resurfacing program at the time, and they said they would not pay for the replacement of a speed hump on a road with, through the resurfacing program. So a lot of people shied away because of that situation. And there was some concerns about liability. Whether they were actual concerns or just perceived concerns at the time could be questioned. Anyways, the board commissioners voted as a body and rescinded the speed hump program. State of practice. Traffic calming has been around for quite a while. I think you've heard me mention it before. It has its origins in Europe. It's widespread in the United States. As you can see here, I've listed various government agencies, technical associations that have developed manuals, guidelines, standards, best practices throughout the years on if you're going to implement, this is how you do it. Closer to Clayton County, at the bottom, I've listed a lot of jurisdictions, counties, and cities in the metropolitan area that have some level of traffic calming programs. Some are really robust and some are very simplistic. Generally, speed humps is a common staple item offered throughout any of these programs. We'll go on to the next slide. I'll just let you know that most of these programs follow the same structure in process. There's slight variations in some of the technical aspects possibly, except for one item that we're touch upon. So, state of practice. What is in a program? This is not a comprehensive list by any means, but I try to pull out the major points, and there's minor aspects to develop. Almost everywhere, they do a petition process. They want to get the citizens involved. Some actual programs we looked at have two stages of petition processes. The streets, they're local streets, 25 miles an hour. They're not collectors. They're not arterial clings. Some of them might go up to 30 miles an hour depending on the use, but it's a residential area. And one thing they emphasize is just because it has this speed limit doesn't mean it's a candidate automatically for traffic calming. It might not be a good fit. And remember what I said to begin with, each location, each site has to be looked at individually. Speed is, you have to have somewhere to document if it's a speeding problem. I put on here eighth-fifth percentile of speed, not to try to get too technical with you. It's a traffic engineering term. It's a longstanding technical term in the industry based off a lot of research and initiatives and studies. It boils down to the eighty-five percent of the people who travel a road we deem as reasonable to drive it as a safe in, under a safe condition in a prevailing everyday setting. Fifteen percent are outliers. You just, you can't design a road to handle them. So that's a technical thing that is a benchmark. As I put on the slide, most of organizations we saw use a 10 mile an hour factor. So, for example, if you had a 25 mile an hour speed limit, you would be looking to qualify for consideration for traffic calming is if your eighth-fifth percentile was over 35 miles an hour. Obviously, if you start installing, for example, speed humps on a road in your eighth-fifth percentile is 30 miles an hour, you're not getting much bang for the buck to reduce the speed down to 25. The greater the violations out there, the more bang for the buck you get to reduce the outliers down to what you want them to drive. Plan. The plan of what you're going to do has to be engineering-focused. As I mentioned earlier, it's an, you're dealing with the built roads in existing conditions, and if standards aren't followed, you can have adverse effects. One critical element is kind of along my discussions of the multi-way stops. If you don't space the speed humps or your traffic circles or your median diverters or whatever calming device you put out there properly, people are going to go faster in between because they need to make up that lost time. So it's not a point solution. It's a linear solution along a road to get them to drive what you want them to drive. That's why it's a calming mechanism. I mentioned earlier, one thing that varies greatly is through the programs is how they treat cost. Some places, 100% of the government pays for it. Some places, 100% of the property owners paid for it, and some places, they split. There wasn't really a consistency on that. A lot of places look at a maintenance or call it a capital recovery fee where they charge citizens annually for a maintenance fee. Almost to a T, all of theirs were on a property tax bill. And I'm just reporting what's out there. There's, if we go forward and you have the vision to implement a program, obviously, cost is going to be a proponent of that. Traffic calming controversies and legal liability concerns. It's widespread accepted practice. As I mentioned earlier, I mean, it's nationwide. It's around the world. If you look at those jurisdictions I listed in Metropolitan Atlanta, most have some sort of traffic calming program. So it's a widely accepted practice. The research basically tells you, you follow your standards. You have a well-documented program, and that takes away a lot of the liability. You've done your due diligence. Most of the issues related to them are striping or some sort of ancillary aspect. It's not the actual measure that you run across where you have issues with. And a lot of those concerns are site-specific, not about program. As in, oh, I like that. I just don't want it in front of my house. And you work through those issues. Emergency vehicle access is a very outspoken item when you hear people saying they don't like traffic calming issues. And it is a concern. It's a valid concern. When we met with our public safety departments in the county, that was the first thing they brought up, was concern about inhibiting their response time.
When did you meet with them?
It was in the middle of last year.
Oh, newly, okay.
Police, fire, sheriff's office.
Please clarify that.
The potholes also are an issue. We can move on. I'm sorry.
So there's obviously an inherent problem between how quickly an emergency vehicle can access and the desire for the citizens to have people running, they're operating their cars in a safe environment day in and day out. There's got to be a balance point someplace. Some agencies actually, on their petition, place a statement on there that says that it may impact emergency response times. So the citizens who are in support of them actively sign something that say they may. I'll get to more of that in a minute. And I'm sure Chuck's burying his head back there, but if anything else fails, we have our county's legal department to back us up. And he and I've had a couple of conversations about this, and I'm not trying to put words in his mouth, but I think his concern about liability on this is very low.
Because it's the same as a pothole.
Essentially.
Essentially.
Okay. Couple more slides. Trying to run through them. If you were considered moving forward with a program, I'm giving you a couple of slides here which I consider high applicability for our area. And this goes back to the feedback we got from the public safety officials, what they thought was most applicable, what was most tolerable, and giving our experience in the county what we think. A lot of the traffic control measures you might run across might be more applicable in more of a traditional grid network of streets where streets run north, south, east, west. Obviously, our county has a lot of subdivisions where curves and vertical, horizontal changes in the road. So some of these might be more applicable for grid systems in the county. The costs up there are bar park costs. They can range greatly. I'll just run through a couple of them a little bit. You can see the pros and cons. But the median diverters, you're talking about reconstructing a portion of a road. Concrete and moving curb and gutter, possibly sidewalk back to construct that in an as-built environment would get costly. The traffic circles are something that you could construct in the footprint of an existing intersection if it's a four-way intersection. If it's a three-way intersection or what people call T-intersection, you would have to reconstruct one side of it. ROW on here is right-ofway cost if you have to purchase additional right-ofway. One thing about traffic circles is it can be less intuitive for someone to navigate because sometimes the bigger trucks will have to turn in front of it or they will feel more comfortable. And as long as they yield to oncoming traffic, that might be the best solution. Then you have your speed awareness signs down there. We touched on that a little bit earlier. Those are educational, and the impact those have, since they're not a physical measure, over time, y'all have witnessed this too. Signs blend into the background, into the landscape, and people don't notice them more. So the impact of implementing a widespread program of that is it would be limited, especially of a permanent nature to keep it in an area where you have repetitive drivers driving every single day. Speed humps, speed cushions. These are a couple of aspects of the vertical deflection. Speed humps will give you probably the best bang for your buck about routinely slowing down traffic. down traffic. They're the lowest cost. They don't require modification for the road. You do have the impact to the emergency response, and bicyclists sometimes complain about it. And depending on how fast you go over it, it might create a little thud noise if you are adjacent to it. Speed cushions is an innovative design that has come about more recent than the speed humps. The idea is you create these channels in the hump area to where potentially a fire engine, which has a wider wheelbase, might be able to straddle the hump portion and not be slowed down as much, or at least can get one wheel off of there.
So, that's not the same as a car, because I've done it.
Yeah. Well, obviously, if a car goes over there, you can run one wheel through, then one wheel goes over the bump. Now, there are studies out there that generally say a delay going over a speed hump for an emergency response vehicle can range from two seconds to ten seconds per hump. Now, is that a huge amount? That's left in the eyes of the beholder. If you have to go through a series of humps to get to your residence at the back of a subdivision, obviously time's gonna add up. We have to keep in mind that the emergency response vehicle is not starting at the start of the subdivision either. They're obviously going through traffic signals and traffic and congestion to get there. So, there's delays in their path all the way. We want to get them there as quickly as possible, but this is an item that if we go forward with that concern and with the program, I mean, citizens would be able to sign off and say they acknowledge that this could delay emergency response.
Real quick, I think it's important to keep in mind, though, that at that point, once the emergency vehicle enters into the neighborhood, their speed is automatically reduced because of what you said earlier, because of pedestrians and so forth. So, that's one thing to bear in mind. So, I just wanted to make that as a point.
So, these last couple of slides, I said high applicability. I would put low applicability for these other ones. I'm not necessarily saying throw it out the window. Some of these are very applicable in specific situations. It really depends on what the needs of the community is and what the citizens are trying to solve. Will they be a prominent one in our program? I don't think so, but I wouldn't want to limit ourselves to the potential implementation of these in the future. Okay, moving on. Potential program process. Just trying to run through a example of how this would flow. Initial request, and this is where some jurisdictions require two petitions. In a aspect of trying to not spend our resources or to spend our resources wisely, instead of going out and doing a full-blown traffic study in a neighborhood where there might not be interest from the citizens, some jurisdictions require a non-official petition from about twenty percent of the property owners or residents in the community to get the process started, or an HRA representative thinking that they're representing the subdivision. Or you could look at, it would be a staffing concern, but you can look at responding to each request and doing a full-blown traffic study. But the next thing is, obviously, a traffic study. We would go out there and verify the speeds and the volumes, and is there a documented speeding problem, or is it more of a perception thing? You know, you might see a couple outliers drive down the road, and your assumption is people are driving too fast on there. But is it a systemic problem that is continuously? That's what the traffic calming program would be set up for. Obviously, we would do a preliminary design, a community meeting to make this community focused, where we propose the measures and we get feedback. Based upon that feedback, as I said, this is an art. There's some flexibility potentially in each site where you can maybe change some things around. Then you go on to the community petition. That's where I would recommend strongly that you address the impact to the emergency response, similar to other jurisdictions on the petition. Funding. Allocating it, collecting it, that's a big thing of how you would fund a program. Obviously, it would come back to the B O C for approval, probably something very similar to the streetlight program that we have right now. The, anything what we've looked at too requires a removal process. That was best practices. Some of them range to six months later. Some of them require you had to be in there for a couple of years, but they gave away, if the community says, "We don't like this," there's a process to remove them too. Okay. Last slide. Moving forward, there's some direction if the board chooses to go forward with more development in a traffic calming program. Obviously, discussion on what measures for inclusion. Are there ones you just don't like, don't want to consider, or do we want to open it in more of a general sense for traffic calming and have more tools in our toolbox for potential use? The speed criteria. I guess my suggestion would be to look at the best practices of ten miles an hour over for an eighth-ish percentile speed. That tends to be what the norm is. The percent approval. Everything we found is property owners. Of course, the more percent you put on property owners, where you have higher percentage of renters, it's gonna be problematic to get speed calming devices out there. We didn't find many below sixty-six percent, two-thirds. In fact, we found a lot seventy and seventy-five percent requirements. The, for reference, the streetlight petition process is fifty plus one that we have in the county, but the restricted parking program we have in the county is at seventy-five percent. So, some feedback, some direction on what type of approval y'all feel is appropriate for your subdivisions. Funding. How would we fund it? County versus community? Is it direct funding? Is it yearly? Is it one-time? Of note, your two, twenty-twenty-one S P L O S program has two million dollars allocated to traffic calming methods. That was voted upon by the citizens. The recommendation I would give, though, is make sure if we move forward with this that the funding is sustainable long-term. That might be great seed money to get the program started with, but that's not the end-all, cure-all, as y'all know, any of the S P L O S funding. Staffing. This is a very difficult one for me, both from an engineering and a program, as well as construction. I would love to sit here and tell you, "I can do it in-house." Guys, that's a concern. Depending on the structure of the program, if you decide, hey, you want like a fifty percent approval process, and you don't want property owners in there, and hey, we're gonna pay for it, I'm gonna be worn out. Floodgates were open. But if that's what you decide to do, we're working on a plan to get it implemented.
So, staffing is actually putting the device in?
Staffing would be to do the study, to run the program, and actually construct the devices in the field. Do we have the technical expertise? Yes. Would we augment it with contractors? Yes. Depending on how robust the program would be, we might sub it all out to consultants and contractors. It's definitely a concern. I mean, basically, right now, we're sitting at thirty-seven percent vacancy in my department. So, just absorbing it into everyday practice, again, it goes back to how much of a demand is this program gonna be? There's interest out there. Y'all have heard it. I've heard it for years. So, that's just something we would need to address appropriately, because the last thing you would want to do, I would want to do, and I'm sure that I'm echoing yours, is develop a program out there that's set up, and it's for failure, and it's not succinct, and it's not something that we can be proud of. So, obviously, next steps is to develop a program, documents, and bring forth a ordinance for y'all to consider for adoption. So, questions? I spoke a lot. I tried to go through as fast as I can, so.
I have a question.
Commissioner Ham.
Yes. Jeff, you mentioned something when you were talking about street lighting and all, the restricted parking. What does that entail?
A while ago, I'm not even gonna try to render a guess. It's been years. This board passed a program for restricted parking. If the residents in a neighborhood desire to make a no-parking zone, it's a petition-based process where seventy-five percent of the property owners would have to agree to it, and in that program, they would have to pay the upfront costs for the installation of the speed, I mean, the no-parking signs. We've had a lot of interest on it. A lot of people just don't want to pay the upfront cost.
Well, I just have a lot of people in neighborhoods that we don't want cars parked on the street, which, you know, is definitely different from what you gave us about that would be, that could be used to slow traffic or whatever, because it's such a danger. I've had two reports of accidents where kids were running for the school bus, and cars would park on the street and then.
Parking on the street is.
So, I know that's an out for me.
It's a difficult subject. I mean, a lot of jurisdictions promote parking on the street. You go into urban areas where there's a lot of activity. People park in the street, and they operate quite safely at times. It's a polarizing thing between what do you want your community to be. By no means am I promoting parking on the street. The infrastructure we have out there on our common road section does not really lend itself for parking on the street. That's the way the county was developed. But when we look at holistically what traffic calming is, I felt it was my diligence to tell you that traffic, parking is one. You and I have had that discussion before.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir. That was a great presentation. It's the most information I've ever received from you. It was good, good stuff. No, that's a very positive. That means like y'all went and did a whole lot of work, as you said you did. That's all. It's a positive.
Thank you.
So, I'm impressed with that, and I just gotta say, even though you still came from the wrong university, but let's move on. So, the point is, starting with the diversion, let's talk about that. In District Three, I could tell you that that part doesn't work. The roundabouts may work, but specifically in several of the subdivisions, one of them being, one of the subdivisions that's asking for a traffic calming device is North Bridge Estates. All they do is run over that little thing and then keep going. So, we know that that doesn't work. I see you laughing, Keith, because you know it's the truth. The other thing I want to say that hasn't worked is, as you stated, was the sign with the speed limit. You were exactly right, because I watched that in a neighborhood with neighbors as they were standing there telling me about other issues, and the cars are speeding past the sign because it means nothing. In today's time, those signs mean absolutely nothing at all. I would like for us to take a look, as you said, the roundabouts, because that seems to be something that I've noticed that has worked, even as far as on Highway one thirty-eight. But as one note, we gotta make sure that they're constructed properly. Someone on one thirty-eight that was not constructed properly, and it almost looked like that diversion deal, and called in the G dot, they came and redid it. It works now. It diverts the traffic or slows it down, rather. The other point I want to bring to our attention real quick is, like the fact that you talked about, there's already a process in place with the streetlights, which this would mimic, so that's good. I also heard you say, "We can't add more to your plate because of thirty-seven percent vacancy." I agree with that, but the two million dollars, tell us about that. If we don't use that money, what's gonna happen to it?
Well, you're getting into the legalities of the S P L O S. I mean, we did use some of it to hire a consultant to do some of our research. So, anything in a S P L O S program, you can't abandon the project. The project hasn't been abandoned. We've done a research. If you choose not to go forward with it, this is a discussion you can have, obviously, with the COO's office, about how to reallocate that funding to other programs. The S P L O S law, having dealt with this longstanding from the beginning on the S P L O S in the county, you just can't abandon a project. You can increase scopes, and you can decrease scopes, but you can't abandon. And by us going through this, at least from Jeff's opinion, is we haven't abandoned the project. But the point of bringing it up is there's money identified, not necessarily allocated, but there's money identified right now in the program for traffic calming. That was the foresight the board had and interest on it when you approved the project list for the citizens to vote on a couple of years ago.
Awesome. So, I'm glad you said that. What I'd like for the CFO to do is go back and see again if we can leverage the two million we already have with like the infrastructure bill funding, real quick, or even look at it once again, the HUD funding to get it going, and then, of course, we'll be able to put it back on the next S P L O S without an issue, hopefully, if the citizens do vote on it. But I'm really excited about this being presented tonight, and then the opportunities for us to really do a deeper dive. One other quick point. If you could add to it that we're missing on the ordinance, what we need to do is add in it with our upcoming subdivisions that we require them, whatever we do. We need to acquire them, require them to address whether or not they're not going to, if they're going to add these calming devices as the subdivisions are being built, and how they're gonna incur that cost, and that will help us with the sustainability model.
Definitely, a stronger stance can be done at the development stage with developers. It hasn't been the emphasis of development in this county for many years, but we can definitely make it that way and try to, you know, start the process. We mentioned the diverters and the traffic circles. Those will be, obviously, from the cost you saw, would be difficult to install or more costly in existing subdivisions. Those are probably more applicable in new subdivisions. The thing about the traffic circles that you had mentioned, I mean, you have to have an intersection to put a traffic circle at. You can put a median diverter in the middle somewhere, but when you start talking about some of the densities we have in our subdivisions, trying to find spacing in between driveways turns into pretty a difficult matter, and then trying to get the spacing of that device or measure appropriately so it actually calms the traffic is problematic at times, so.
Awesome. One quick legal question, Mr. Reed. On the new subdivisions, even though, you know, dealing with the zoning matters right now, could we not add this with one of the conditions as each subdivision is brought back before this board for consideration? Because we've had street lighting as a condition. Remember, we've added extra street lighting, extra sidewalks. So, could this not be added in one of the conditions of each project when we're going through the zoning process?
How Jeff has, or.
For new subdivisions.
Right. Well, I shouldn't say Jeff. How Director Matarco has laid this out.
Yes, Jeff.
Some of the things require this board to determine what you want to see. So, your funding, if you're saying, "Okay, are we putting this on the developer to include this as part of their cost of development? Is this something that the county is going to partner with?" You know, so some of those things, depending on how the board wants to go, might be put in the, wouldn't necessarily be the zoning ordinance, it'd probably be in the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
So, be a part of whenever they create a subdivision, depending on how the board wants to move in this, you might be able to add some of those to the subdivision process.
Awesome. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Real quick, the S P L O S. What year? How much more time do we have on the S P L O S you mentioned about the money?
It's the twenty-twenty-one program, which was six years, so through, I mean, your stop official collections in twenty-seven, but you can keep expending the monies for a couple of years after that. So, there's no urgency or potential loss of everything.
And the other thing, of course, the neighborhoods, the community meetings that I've had, that you've attended, these are older neighborhoods, so roundabouts would not work. So, I'm glad you said that about different, for different areas, different communities, different districts.
Yeah. Let me take one minute. Neighborhoods, they're traffic circles. They're small, fourteen-foot wide-ish little traffic.
So, you could put them in the older?
In subdivisions, yes. Roundabouts are larger scale. They're kind of an alternative to a traffic signal, and they're not necessarily installed for speed reduction. They're installed as a safety measure. It regulates traffic and provides accessibility. They're a lot safer than a traffic signal. We can get into technical things later, but.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Ham next. Have we ever had a traffic calming study done, a program created?
That's what he just-
We had the speed hump program, which is an aspect of traffic calming.
And so, and also too, let me get a, a copy of this presentation.
Yes, sir.
Definitely send us a copy of that. Any other questions?
So where are we now? So next community meeting, they're gonna ask me. What, what can I say? Are we-
Well, that, that's a good point and as, as, what I would like to see is for Mr. Matarco to put together a, a plan, to create a plan and to get with each individual, when you're talking about the devices and the common mech, uh, mechanisms that would be used, to see which ones each commissioner would favor. But the, the foundation of what the, the, uh, the program or plan would be, I guess you just look at best practices of what our neighbor, uh, no need to reinvent the wheel where you can get a policy in, in some direction from those best practices out of those counties. And then bring that back, like I said, meet with each commissioner individually and see what direction they wanna go in, in reference to this. But we do need some type of policy because it seems like more and more citizens are asking for it. But I also would like to make sure that we see the petition more at fit, more than 50%. Because as you know, if you remember this, we went and addressed a subdivision that there was maybe five or six houses that was complaining about they wanted rumble sticks. And then the people who lived in front of where they wanted rumble sticks said, no, that's a lot of noise, I don't wanna hear that every day and every night. So I think it needs to be a, in, in my opinion, a, uh, more involved to 70% or 65%, more than 50% involvement in terms of that petition.
The good part, real quick, if I may do an addendum, is this, um, county has in place a requirement for HOAs for new subdivisions anyway, so you have a point in which to be able to go to, uh, some of the older one, older ones we don't, but the newer ones we do.
It definitely helps as a starting point. I mean, the, the petition process, similar to the streetlights and other things, is a community-based thing. T and D staff's not gonna go knock on your doors. We can assist, we have assisted, um, but the community has to, um, put the legwork into doing it. But yes, sir, I, I will definitely follow up with each and one of you and try to get consensus, work through the COO's office to try to build the program that we feel fits the mold and, and the general comments we've gotten back. Um, obviously, that's the next step and to work with the attorney's office to draft whatever legal mechanism or ordinance or something to, to fully adopt the program.
Sounds like a plan. Appreciate your presentation, it was very informative and, uh, make sure you get each of us a, a copy of the, uh, presentation.
Yes, sir.
And we stand adjourned.